Alright, so I think we're recording, so we're gonna officially open the meeting. It is a public meeting with regard to 15 North Greeley of the working groups. So, we have two people, I guess we wanna maybe just go around and say your names. Two people from the planning board, two members of our architectural review board, and two members of our town board. So, I don't know for the public if you wanna go around and just say it.
I'm really glad we're standing along, architectural review board. Bob Shenko, architecture review board.
Lisa Katz, town board.
Ali Shantov, town board.
Sabrina Charnival, director of planning.
Ed Phillips, town manager.
Alright, thank you. So, I wanna thank you all for coming. I think this is going to be a very good meeting because it allows us to kinda get input from the three boards that are arguably the most important when talking about this proposal. And I think it'll function better to have, be able to have two people from each board sitting together talking rather than, you know, five or six people from each board. It gets a little unworkable. So, I wanna thank you all for being here. This is the first time we've had our ARB sitting with us, so welcome. We are happy to have you. So, I think what's on the table right now is where the town board is considering legislation with respect to a proposed development at 15 North Greeley, which is the current writing building. It's kinda hard to look at everybody the way we're sitting, so I'm sorry if I'm not like looking and keeping with eye contact. So, I think from the town board's perspective, we've looked at this. We obviously wanna hear thoughts from the planning board, and I know you guys sent a memo today, as well as from the architectural review board, to hear your thoughts on the proposed legislation. We're obviously not at site plan approval yet. We haven't gotten those, you know, that document in yet, that submission. But it is with regard to the legislation to see, I don't know what that is, but I think that's supposed to be the building looks like, or Jenga version of it. And see what you think. I assume you guys have been caught up onto us as the project. So, I'd love to, I think, just go around generally with thoughts and then go through the meeting, go through the memo. And then we also have Jeff Davis here representing the developer. In case we, shut that off. In case we have any questions, he can, you know, he's not being put on trial today, but certainly if we have any questions or thoughts, and I think that there were a few updates, and I know they had some responses to your memo as well, so we'd love to hear that tonight as well. Ed, anything else to add?
No, we have new members here, somebody you wanna get to talk to.
Yeah, yeah, I would love to hear, not to put you guys on the spot, but, you know, I've heard from, from, we've heard from planning board a number of times and town board. So, we'd love to at least get initial thoughts on this from, from both of you as esteemed members of our architectural review board.
Thank you. Well, the project's been around for a while, for years or so. So, I've kinda been catching up in, in a week reading, catching up. So, I'm, I'm new to this, but I'm catching up. I follow, you know, some of the stuff that was strictly in the town emails early on, with other renderings came out.
Sorry, when I meant new to this, I didn't mean you haven't looked at it before, just new to the working group.
Right, but I'm new to the project.
Yeah.
And I acknowledge it. So, some of the topics, I guess, we're talking about is the legislation, as you say, the structure of the town board rather than the planning board taking the lead. And, and the project itself has structure. So, I'll start with the last coming back. I think it's a beautiful design, very sophisticated. It's, it's, you know, watching the Form-based code, which I was, I did not support at all. But, but it would be nice to have some residential, you know, in the town. There's a lot of good reasons. People that would shop downtown, you know, it's good planning to have residential in downtown. It's a, it's a manageable bite-sized first project as opposed to proving something that is a gigantic amount of housing. You know, I don't think there'd be very many schoolchildren except for the portable housing. So, it's all kind of manageable. It is a larger structure than anything in the town. But I think that they've done a very wonderful job, actually, of breaking up the massing, breaking up the fenestration, you know, treating the four corners, the four sides of the building, the backs of corridors to the train stick to the train tracks facing the street. At least from the renderings I've seen, and I haven't had the opportunity to study the big floor plans, but, you know, the glass on the down floor and different setbacks for the upper levels and the courtyards and, and all the greenness, you know, the eco-friendliness of the building. And so, I'd like to find a way to support the project. You know, there's, I attended the public hearing recently. There were some good comments that came out, some of the little details that often don't get thought about until you're really working them out, whether it's an Amazon delivery charter, some of those kinds of very valid detailed questions that came out. So, so I guess I'm starting at a point where, you know, as opposed to, if you didn't like a project and finding a way to kill the project, I'd like to find a way to work out all those details, have the developer address all those details that, you know, people have brought out, but, but find a way to make it happen. I think that would be a good thing for the town for many reasons. In terms of the legislation, and I, I don't think I'm thrilled about giving out a change of zoning without hailing down the site plan approval and the architecture of the project. I'm a real estate developer and I'm also a licensed architect, by the way. So, you know, there would be nothing potentially from the developer, the owner, selling the land, they're figuring out his zoning approval, and somebody doing something that was not as architecturally appealing. I'm speaking for myself now. And if it was not architecturally appealing, if it was a cheaper-looking building, if it was a flat roof, if it was boxing, that didn't have interesting fenestration, I wouldn't support it. I mean, I'm not coming at this from the standpoint that there's a need for housing in downtown, even though there's a need for housing in the entire region. So, I'm supporting it because I think they've done a very nice job of creating a welcoming addition to the fabric of the community that wouldn't if it wasn't a building like that. So, I wonder why you couldn't, you know, advance the project, give the owner comfort, because I know it's very expensive. I know it's very expensive to go hire consultants and architects and planners and traffic people and go through all that stuff to get cycling, which is a very expensive process, process. With no assurance that you can exit with a successful result. But I think it would be nice if you could package all that together, and then the zoning and the site plan approval and all that gets issued at the same time to protect the community, to ensure they get what they bargained for, what the developers are. In terms of the town board running the approval process as opposed to what traditional planning board, you know, in general, I think, you know, planning boards do have a function and they, you know, I don't know what the members of the planning board, but I'm gonna assume that they're really, they're trained in, you know, in, in profession in planning, and all that stuff, planning, zoning, and, and that architecture, some of the real estate development and all that, just like the architecture review board is, you know, predominantly licensed architects, which is not. So, I'm not sure why it's switching. I mean, the Hunsland project, architecture group room itself were against because it was an unattractive structure. And I felt that that was kind of pushed through the town by a board that against the will of their community, I don't know about the planning board, but the Form-based code was also kind of led by the town board, it seems to me. I wasn't a fan of that for a number of reasons. So, I don't know why that switch is being done. So, I don't know how the planning board feels about this project, because we'll hear about it tonight. But it's just a question that, I guess.
I think the planning, the town board has always had decision-making over, over special permits as well like that.
But why are, but why are projects, why are they all, why are all the large projects in the town being special permits as opposed to going over the initial process? You know, they answer the town, just I ask the questions.
If I could, if I could chime in on that.
Sure.
We already have, it's 18 or 19 existing, I think it's 18, special permits in town code. The approval authority for each one is either the zone board that deals, the planning board, or the town board. Most, I don't have the number, I have the numbers like a big amount, but most of the approval authority rests with the zoning board appeals. Some with the planning board, probably the least with the town board, but the number is, the four thousand is a special permit for project was, or four thousand, that's why it was processed. That was a town board approval. So, that is, I think, one of the few where the only one, where the town board is able to work hard.
The Chapel Crossing.
That's a different, so that's a different process. There's a preliminary development concept, and Chapel Crossing is 114 acres, one of the parts. So, there was a two-step process there that involved planning board, especially Tom Curly, where a preliminary concept plan was designed first, which had sort of the big pieces, and then we kind of drilled down and got more granular, it was site plan review.
And I'm also happy that we're here because for Chapel Crossing Crossing, Form-based code, the architecture review board was really not a part of the process at all.
I agree, and I think you should have been. So, that's what I wanted to add.
I actually have a question about that. In your mind, did not the Chapel Crossing, did this not get approved, you guys?
Yeah, but it was a fully vacated at that point. I think you guys did a terrific job, and it looks very nice.
Oh, I agree, you wanna be involved early, there's a question about that, absolutely. But you did, the process, they get it to.
We, 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 they gave us a presentation, we had nothing to say about. It was a fully vacated at that point.
Appreciate it, me. Sammy, your thoughts?
Um, just a little bit of background, I've been a licensed architect for 32 years, and I'm still a practicing architect. You know, and I believe there, you know, I think you have to believe, is there a place for modern architecture in Chapel Crossing? And we believe that. That I think this project could be a very significantly well-thought-out, it's a significantly well-thought-out design building in my mind. I was against the Form-based code. I was particularly against the style guide of the Form-based code. I think that's everything we shouldn't be doing. We shouldn't be, and I, I use the word, you know, we don't wanna make a Disney fight. We don't wanna put historic fabric that never was there. In this area especially, Greeley, I see there's very little historic fabric. And I say this also in context, a lot of my work is in New York City, working with landmarks and zoning in New York City. And I, I just, you know, I live in a century modern building with the hill and Chapel Crossing. So, I think, you know, there is certainly a place for this. And also knowing that this is in a zone that's against the railroad tracks, just like Hunt's place was, you know, I think there are, there are, you know, the special permit makes sense that it could be higher because you're not backing off to other residential zones behind it or another zone behind it. I think, you know, we know that there's a little bit of slope here, a little bit of hill. We know there's a hill up here, so that's, the height of it has to be taken in context of, it's a piece of modern architecture, it's very, you know, I think it's, they did a great job of breaking down the massing. The one thing they did here that I love about it is they put all the housing facing the street and all the corridors facing the railroad track. My biggest problem with Hunt's places is almost like a purpose site. It's a building made all the way to the lot lines. And, you know, you have sprinklers on the windows that don't open. And, you know, I think that's a sad, a sad, sad project. Whereas I think this is the total opposite. I think it's a beautiful, modern building. I think it could make Chapel Crossing visible to surrounding towns, to people looking to move here. You know, there's a, people talk about the vibrancy in Pleasantville. That's, I think, sorely lacking here, but I think if we have, you know, it doesn't take just the building, but I think that's part of it that attracts people. It could be a great project. So, I'm, you know, all for the ones to see it built. I do have some questions about, you know, other more technical things, but, you know, that could be that way. So, that's my opinion about the market.
It's also be noted, it's really on the periphery of the downtown. We're not a very big downtown to begin with, but, and if it was where the city bank, you know, is or something, it'd be a different story in terms of scale, like, in my mind versus the fabric of the community as opposed to being off to the side.
And just to your point about the site plan and the legislation, the board has been talking about that because we had the same thought that what if this gets approved? And then, not saying you guys would do this, but either you or another developer then came in after and said, okay, we're just gonna build a big square box here. And obviously, that's not something we want. We're considering it because of the building that it is. So, I think we were talking about what can be built into the legislation to ensure that some, that this is built.
Originally, we tried to tie cycling to the legislation so that it would all be done at once, so there would be no question, that it wouldn't all go at the same time, so there wouldn't be any questions. This is what we wanna build. We don't wanna change. We, we want everybody to see what it is today, be happy with what it is today, and done.
So, why don't we do that? That's your way, and that's what you should do.
Well, wait a minute now. I'm not, I wouldn't be so quick to come to that conclusion because I think there are other things at play other than the architecture of the building. I happen to think that it's a very handsome building. I really believe that. I think that the architect has done a relatively skillful job in doing the things that you talked about. I just don't think it's the right building for this site. I don't think it's the right building for this town. To me, the architecture of the building looks more like a, there's nothing wrong with this. It looks more like a, an institutional building. It'd be a great college door, for example. Or it could be a small community hospital, that was the, the towers being fed to us in the bottom of the pancake kind of D and T stuff is, it looks like it could be a, could be a laboratory building. And I hope you get some stats on the roof, it would be a laboratory building. And to me, it looks like an institutional building rather than a residential building in the context of the scale of the handling. And so, what I would, that's sort of fundamental, I have number one with respect to the image of the building. And we can get into some, some details about the style of the building and whether it's appropriate for the town. I think that it's a, it's, it's an exercise in a demonstration of something which is called neo-rivaleism, which is you celebrate the mass of the building. And there are indications that you don't see it here necessarily because I didn't have time to put the roof on, but you can see it in the imagery. It's the mass of the building which is being celebrated here, that the roof shapes and the way in which it addresses the street, and the way in which the windows actually are not organized in any way. They're disorganized in any way, where it's almost like facade of a building would be like wrapping paper. And you can wrap the facade with it. There's no relationship between what goes on inside the building with respect to the uses inside the building and the community on the outside. It's essentially to me a actual personality of the, they have the same.
But I think it would look more institutional if you had a career in windows, is what I think you're getting at.
No, I'm not, let me get there.
Okay.
I'm not getting there yet.
Okay. Well, I'm just putting two of your thumbs together.
But I think it's, we, you know, architects are gonna disagree. I mean, that's, we'd love to disagree, and, and thankful, we think you have deep thoughts about this stuff. But I think that, I think there are some deep ones here that we should share, which is, this is not, it's not first about the architecture. This is first about the site planning, and it's first about the public policy of what we want to build here, the neighborhood that we want to build here. And in my mind, one of the things that, where the town board has fallen down so far is that we haven't had an articulation, not the vibe, or we haven't had an articulation of what we want this, it's gonna be in the neighborhood, I mean, sooner or later, the insights. And it does, yeah, they actually needs it, absolutely. But what is it? What's it gonna be? What, what do we aspire, what do we aspire to here other than a building that some people like and a lot of, and other people don't? There's, there's more to this than the building. And to me, it has to do with, again, what are we building here in terms of the neighborhood? And if you look at the ground.
Do you mean in terms of like architectural style?
No. That's not, I think.
What are we doing with the corridor?
I think you could, yeah, I think you, sooner or later, you get there. And these guys will get there when it is to them. But I, and I think it's appropriate to talk about.
I actually like different architectural styles as opposed to everything.
I didn't say that, I, okay. I didn't say that, I didn't.
I did make, you know, but we want this to be a housing neighborhood? Are you questioning the function and use of it?
It's not what I want. It's not. We haven't had the conversation yet. And what, I mean, what I think it could be is it could be a residential neighborhood, an in-town residential neighborhood. One of the things that you, with some retail, like the, I think that the, the idea of having a diner at the corner, if we can make that work, if Mr. Davis is able to, to make that happen, I think that would be fabulous. But I also think that it's very, very important for us to have sustainable tendencies here on ground order. And so, I don't think we ought to be doing a lot of retail here because it's, we just, we just don't need what we do. I think we ought to be establishing this with sustainable tendencies, which would be residential. I mean, that's what sells here, that's who we are.
You think residential, what?
I think that what should go on here is a parking garage, which is what we have here. Is a, a, I don't know, 50-foot-long bike rack, which we have here. The furniture of the property as designed is about 160 feet of bike rack and market garage. And if we are, if we are thinking about, we want to build a neighborhood here instead of just do a project here, we need to think about what that means. We need to think about what people are gonna do here, whether people are gonna wanna walk on the street, what's gonna happen when the other side of the street is done, are they gonna benefit from the mutual investment in the street itself? And one of the things, there's, you mentioned the Form-based code, not supposed to talk about that, but you mentioned the Form-based code, the Form-based code. The principle of Form-based code was, and I agree with this, and we probably all know it, instinctually, we know that people want to go where people want. And if you, if you think about the city streets and town streets, if you walk down, the ones that have parking rides on them, that nobody knocks on, on those streets, nobody wants to walk there, nobody does.
Yeah, but the parking garage is facing the railroad tracks, the parking is necessary.
We have, you look at the doors. Have you looked at the doors?
Yeah.
Yeah, because on the frontage of the drawing, of the, of the tire, it might be a parking garage on the front.
I thought it was behind the retail.
Yeah, so you have a drive, when you're big driving. They, yeah.
The garage is open, which.
Right, of course, it has to be on the ground. Well, before we even get, we're getting, we're getting off track for a second. I just wanna hear general kind of views, and then we can go.
First, I'll try to, but this is a conversation the architects are having.
Okay, I don't need you to be obnoxious, though. Okay. I'm trying to, as the, as the head of this town, I'm trying to just make sure that this stays organized, otherwise, with all due respect, Tom, you could talk for three hours, and we won't get anywhere. You always have a lot to say, which is very good, but I also need to make sure we're keeping this going. And I wanna hear general views first and then dive into the specifics of where everything is. Because I wanna hear from Eldad also, and then get into that.
So, I just, you look at the drawing, you can hear it says, run into the parking garage and bike, bike brands. It's just happens to be true. So, that's one of my main concerns, and I think. It's critical to do something here which, which engenders a town street that people are going to, to want to walk on and be on. This is the kind of thing that we tried to suggest, had to try to in our latest sort of version of what we thought the, what we thought the legislation should say, is to put things into legislation that actually guarantee that. That makes a statement about, well, on the frontage of the building, you will have habit uses, like building blocks, like retail, like residential, in order to ensure that that street is built as a bound street that people are gonna wanna be on and add value to the property across the street. I'm not against the building architecture to say, I, I have a big problem with the site planning of it. And I, it, for instance, the lobby to the building is up and on, of the, of the alley between Susan Lawrence and the building. But these are things that I just don't understand, and I mean, I know why it's designed this way. I believe I know why it's designed this way is because the objective was to get as many units as possible inside. And that's why, that's why that has a serenade edge. Because the, the problem is to get as much light as you can to the side of the building in order to have apartments.
Well, and also, they're not putting apartments on the, the entire back of the building.
Yes.
So that windows can open and.
Yes. But that's why it takes a shade. And if you decided that you did, did not want this shade, that's another subject. I mean, the question is, in 56 units per acre, or 45 units in total for the site, is driving this design? And that's our objective, is to get 45 minutes on the property, then that's your design. That's it. Because I think that's the only way you can do it. The architect's done a very skillful job, and we can tolerate it. You could go taller as well. So, our pitch is, plenty of work, four months and a half has been, we need to think about public policy first and, and put that in the zoning that's being closed. And then let the marketplace, Mr. Davis and Mr. Finer, I think it's the gentleman's name, let them respond to public policy here. And it seems to me that what we're doing instead is taking a proposal by one property owner and one developer, absent of the conversation that we've been trying to have, and saying, well, that's our public policy. And I think that it doesn't quite meet the line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Eldad, we're just, I wanna hear from everyone. We will definitely hear from you, and I actually have a comment to that, but I wanna hear from Eldad first.
Thank you. So, you know, there's a lot to say. You know, what Tom was talking about is planning, or who's our principles that are, you know, have a history of yielding better results, right? A better streetscape, better street life, you know, better towers. And, you know, you probably heard me talk about it on Tuesday night, and we talk about it a lot, and we're talking about it here elsewhere, where, you know, zoning and policy, public policy is a statement of values, right? And to me, and I'm biased, right? You know, the only tool you have is the hammer, and now I'm zoning person, that's my profession, a zoning landlord's person. And so, zoning to me is super important, again, I'm biased, but because its outlines are values in town. And to Tom's, one of Tom's points of, you know, the idea of putting forth what we as a town want, that's critical. And I know I'll have to talk about the FTC, but since everyone stated their positions, I think it's relative to, I know that I was supportive, not because of the design. And even more supportive, like, the, at the end, there was sort of the compromise and also thing that went over about the pilot, about North Greeley. Because North Greeley is so clearly a place in our town where we could have more development, residential development, better development. And to think about that as a corridor, to me, makes no sense in the world. It's what I said, first time this came up, the development here is, is whether we like it or not. Whatever is agreed upon here has an impact on the rest of the corridor and will set a precedent. I am, the architectural design of this building is, for me, the, probably the last thing that I'm concerned about. I want to see housing in our downtown, where the housing prices in the state. I'd love there to be more housing. I'm not afraid of density in the downtown like ours that is already walkable, right? People are already walking on downtowns. Our shops are growing in number, the vacancies are decreasing. And, you know, I personally kind of report it when we talk about the idea of adding more units and, oh, hopefully, there won't be, you know, children in these units anymore. So, it was like, I, I welcome more people in our town. And I think we should be welcoming, and this is, again, a statement of values along that line also. So, the architectural design is less important to me. The success or failure of this project, from my perspective, not from a commercial perspective. I, I mean, I wish them the best of luck. I hope that it is successful from, you know, they're, the seller, rentiness, whatever they do. But to me, the success or failure of this project is all about the ground level, everything that happens at, at, at the street. And to that end, some of the suggestions in the memo that was sent over to you all from our board, get at that specifically. board, get at that specifically. Questions about what happens at the ground level, uh, the units that are permitted. We talked a little bit about potential for a requirement for blazing, uh, windows, uh, to get light, uh, in the building and onto the street. Um, the concern of sort of a blank wall for a very long extended period of distance is a real concern. That's a dead space. Uh, Tom's point that people have to be where people are, it's again, it's a proven concept, right? There the idea of building some density around a train station in downtown is hundreds, if not thousands of years old. There's nothing new about the idea of some density, you know, building out from a town square or a, or, you know, a public transportation center like ours. Um, so, uh, I don't, I don't, I, you know, to, I, I don't like Tom, I don't really care about the shape. And I'm not afraid of density or height. Uh, but there are, I would love to, we've always, since this has been presented to us, we have been concerned about sort of the order of operations here. Like, what is leading what? And to me, the zoning is critical. Um, you know, at, at our last, or the last one that I was at, uh, working with eating when we were over at the, at the pack. Um, you know, there was, uh, sort of a discussion and some back and forth with, um, some members of the public, including the developer. And there was like, you know, this whole thread of, well, it'll be at the dollar school if you don't let me do what I wanna do. Um, I can tell you, first of all, my ten-year-old loved that. I mean, from Belle, we thought that was a great idea. And so, but my point is that's, that's not how, you know, like, how we need to think about doing this. When we think about what do we want here, again, because of the precedent that it sets for the rest of this corridor, the very least. Uh, so obviously I can continue talking for a long time. Um, we think that the zoning, I think, needs to be uh, thought through a little bit more. Um, but I would love to see development here. I'd love to see density. I'd love to see. Um, I don't fully agree with Tom. I think, I think this I can support more retail than just the diner. Because of what we're seeing already in the downtown and the idea of, you know, for the, the units here is another, uh, you know, eight or so people above, so smaller units. So, uh, I'm excited to see where we go.
Thank you.
Allie. So I just wanted to share, first of all, how thrilled I am that we're all here tonight. This is very important to me. I'm a junior member on the town board. This is a huge project for the community. We all know that. And I think that in order for the community to have the best results, to get the best results, that requires all of us to work together. We don't have to agree on everything. In fact, I hope that we don't. Um, so I just wanna thank you all. Your comments were so thoughtful and I appreciate them. Um, I've spent a lot of time trying to educate myself on this project and try to understand it conceptually and beyond. Um, I have some concerns. I have some things that I'm excited about. I, since we're all talking about it, I strongly oppose the form-based code, but that's not to say that I oppose development. I think that's, um, a misconception when people talk about the form-based code and their feelings on it. I do understand that there is a need for housing in, in the community and in the state. I would love to work towards solving that, but in a way that is thoughtful and works for the community. And I also wanna say that, um, I don't, I think it is foolish for anyone to expect to come into the community and not expect to have to work with the community on the result. We have our architectural review board, our planning board. Members of our community who have thirty-plus years of experience in these respective fields who have been long-term residents here in our hamlet and are very invested in the community. Those are the voices that should that matter most to me. I respect your opinions. And I think that in order, again, to get the best result, we come together with the developer, with the owner of the property and with, with you all. So I hope that there is room to work together to make the tweaks that we need to make so this project works for the community. That's, that's what's the most important. And, and I do agree with Tom that there is some room here to think about the corridor. I know, Eldad, you, you agree, not just this property, but how it's going to affect the surrounding area. And we have an opportunity here to do something old and exciting. And that's not to be taken lightly.
Thank you. Um, so just to address a couple of things, um, with regard to this, so not to bring it up again, but obviously I was not in favor of the form-based code. Again, um, not because I, I was against development. I always said it was for development. I just didn't think that kind of form over function was the way we wanted to go about it. And I thought that, um, it needed to be evaluated a bit more on an individual basis. Um, and then if a project made sense, it made sense, but I didn't believe in an overall form-based code. That being said, as part of that process, the board did spend a long time talking about what we kind of wanted to see in the town, specifically with North Greeley. And we heard from hundreds and hundreds of residents on this exact issue. And overwhelmingly, everyone said that's where we'd have to have additional housing. It should be on North Greeley because it's not right in the center of town. And we also said that that is kind of a straight shot, that if we can have some retail there, that would actually add to the walkability of town because it's straight, there's no hill, it's flat, it continues the town. So I, I think that this building is actually a start in that direction by putting, you know, hopefully a diner, which we know everyone wants, and some retail on the ground floor, adding housing there. And then it becomes, you know, less dense in terms of housing as you get more toward, I guess, the center of the hamlet. Um, that's not to say that we don't wanna look at other areas of North Greeley with that same concept in mind. Specifically, we have a parking lot right across the street from Susan Lawrence. It's town-owned, so we actually can do something about that as opposed to, you know, an individual, you can say, who wants you to put, you know, a driving range in your house. And they say, yeah, that's nice, we're not doing that. But this is an area that we can actually have say over. So that might be something, and I would actually love to see Tom, you and the town board kind of look at that piece and to see if that's something where we wanna add potentially additional retail with parking behind it. So it's off the street, so it's not, you know, it's not, that parking lot's not lovely to look at. If there were some beautiful stores with parking behind it, that is something that could be very exciting for that area of town. And I have heard from merchants as well that they would welcome additional retail there with additional housing on that, uh, especially on that carter. So I actually, to say we haven't thought about it, I think is, is not correct because the town board has spent a significant amount of time, um, discussing it, that belly dancers. Has spent a significant amount of time discussing it and thinking about it and figuring out what, what does make the most sense for the town without saying, okay, we're putting just four-story buildings everywhere. Um, that it's a little more thoughtful, actually, I think, to do it, uh, where we can see what makes sense. And at some point, maybe there is too much housing and we don't want that, but we do think there needs to be more retail at that point. Then you can kind of tinker with it. And so we have been thinking about that. And, and I do think that you know, despite your issues with, I'm not lashing you, I'm not laughing at that. Um, with, you know, what maybe the building looks like, I do think that this is gonna get us at least there somewhat. One of the things to add to that that they didn't like is because the way it's signed, kind of the sidewalks are much wider over there. I think that it, it actually incentivizes people to come over there and sit and look at that area instead of a narrow sidewalk. It actually will give you, I think, a little bit of that breathing room and sense of, of space and really start to kind of invigorate that area of, of North Greeley more than it, certainly more than it is now. So I really like that part of it. Um, but I, I kind of feel like we're all feeling like this could work. It just maybe needs to be tinkered with a little bit because I think it does kind of get to a lot of the things that we're talking about. I know you don't like the building, but, um.
No, I don't want that.
But I, I do think that the town board has been cognizant of what should happen to North Greeley. And we always said that it should be more housing on North Greeley, but there also should be retail on that ground floor at least to kind of invigorate the street and incentivize people to walk down that street. Because right now, there's not much of a reason to walk down there.
And, and my, my conclusion based on the site plan that apparently we're going to get, if you put the zoning in place the way you've had it written down, my conclusion is people are not gonna want to walk on that street. They aren't because it's gonna be a dead, um, like, I don't know, from where the, from where the retail is, or where, there's no reason to be there. And I think that's a problem. And all of the things that you just talked about, I completely agree with you. I do. I mean, I'm I'm an architect, and I spent, I took a little bit here, just so that you know. I spent like thirty years in S O M, then H O K, every master planning, uh, for communities, architecture, uh, institutional work. So I have a little bit of experience also in stuff. And my experience tells me that we need to work on the ground floor of this thing. We need to, to say agree with you of this proposal. We need to find a way to do the things you wanna do on this piece of property. The, the invitation to look at the other side of the street already, I mean, that, obviously, I think that that's a great thing. We should do it. We thought that that's a great thing. We should do, be doing it for quite a while. And there was the notion of focusing in on North Greeley a year ago, two years ago, and making that a special study area. And then it went away for some reason. So I'm totally in favor of that. I also am not in favor of putting a hole on this in order to do that. We need to build.
I agree.
It's time to build. I'm an architect. I'm a builder. It's time to build. My only problem is, my only concern is, what we're building here is not yet in the public interest. And it's our job work within the public interest and to find a way to insert those qualities that we think are going to make a better town, not necessarily a good-looking project. And I think that we can do all those things. If we come up with a set of in the zoning, we can just find, is there, it's not much, it's like a page. It's really nothing in terms of, if we, if we do that, I'm entirely confident that Mr. Davis is an architect or any architect you have been and work under those constraints. And it gives us a great building, which has whatever architectural style we think is appropriate. And this is me kind of share. By the way, I'm a fan, I'm not a fan of historicism, you know, Georgian stuff. One of my great disappointments in the, uh, technical crossing was the architecture. We could have been much better. We didn't have an opportunity. We didn't have the leverage to change that. And that was the popular thing, and it was just gonna happen that way. And all brothers does, a poor one does, and that's what they do, and that's their market. This is different. There was a, a young woman who, I think she was a student, who made this one little speech at one of your meetings and said, you know, I'm young, and, you know, what you guys have done in your generation is fine, but we're a new generation and we want to look at the world in the way we want to look at it. We want to build need an apartment that means something to us. And so let's do something new here. Let's do something different. I'm all for that. And whatever kind of priority, whatever you wanna call it, there's a way to do that. You don't have to do this project in order to do that. You can work within the zoning, modify something, and get the same result.
So, sorry, nevermind, just to I have a question. I want you to say, why do you think that this proposal does not satisfy the public good?
It doesn't satisfy the public good, or, okay, you can say it again, because it does not address the public space, the public realm. It does not, it does not provide what we need to be providing for in the public realm.
No, but they've got, they've got a corny detail on the, on the fact, you know, it's a triangle side, right? And down the street, you know, it's not gonna be a whole lot more building on that side of the street, right? So quick, and the opportunities where you have in front of parking, and parking is reality, goes in the back. You've got a rapper, a retail, or a diner, or whatever it's gonna be. And they've got, you've got a pretty significant sidewalk condition between the front of the building and the curb, much more than the downtown has. You know, the streetscape. You know, I, I wanted to widen the sidewalk and take away the parking spaces, which was sacrilegious, and I got shut down for that. You know, I think one of the side look is, whether it's just people walking and having enough room to feel comfortable strolling, pushing baby carriages, the street furniture, plenty of things, other things. And, and the dimension where they're pulling the building back and creating that space between the Susan Lawrence Building. You know, that could be, if it's landscaped properly, if it's furnished with some street furniture, could also be a public space in there, too.
So Jack, do you have a?
Can I, I think it would be helpful to actually talk to us and understand why it was designed the way it was. It, it's not a very easy site to design. And the reasons you're saying, why is the lobby tucked that way? Because the community doesn't need to go to the lobby. The residents can go to the lobby. There's two different access points for the lobby because of the line of the building. So we thought it was best not to lease frontage of the building just for the lobby because it's just the residents that are gonna use that. So if you put the lobby to the back and you had a corridor there, you have a plan in front of you, we can walk through and talk through the specific reasons why the architect. I can tell you how much time we spent going through it. And we spent in the meetings, walking through how much retail there was from starting at over eight thousand square feet to ending at four thousand square feet to looking at the sidewalks that we increased the width of the sidewalk by eight feet to create public spaces proceeding and landscape areas for the public, not for the building, so that we widen the sidewalks to have areas that's in front of the bike area, so that that bike area is glazed glass and covered. And Andrew, our architect, designing, and probably one of them speaking incorrectly, that you need a place to put the bikes. We need bikes. We're in an area to use bikes. It needs to be accessible to get access to outside. But we don't want that to be a space that's dead. So we created a landscaped area for the public in front of that. And then you have a driveway and then a, a many space and an entrance to the building. And then next to all of that is retail space. So other than that, there's a garage entrance, there's twenty-four feet wide for comedy cars and accessible vans, delivery trucks, garbage trucks, because everything is tucked behind that. So you don't see any of that. You don't wanna see.
Behind the retail, right?
People, like, there's only a drive-in. You do not see parking. You do not see any, if you have a plan there, we can walk through each different section of it. I do retail all over the country. I don't have actual, in projects, there's no parking. I put it on the opposite side, so everything is activated. We don't want that space anywhere. This is an unbelievably long site. And to activate it as best as we possibly could was one of the most important things we spent a lot of time on. There was, there was eight thousand square feet of retail, and you pulled it back saying, get retail forced.
So I, I appreciate, you know, that Andrew spent a lot of time on this and, and it's an interesting piece of plans. I get that. Um, you know, I also just think that there's gonna be some people who just feel differently or are gonna ask, why is it this and why is it that? And we should be able to talk about these things without it getting contentious. No, I'm just, I'm gonna say, like, I'm, I'm happy we're talking about these things, since, you know.
But we're not.
Three, three.
Not talking about it. All we keep getting is memos saying, reduce the footprint of the driveway from twenty-four feet, that's code, to twenty-two feet.
I disagree. This is us talking about it. And I'm, I would like you to be respectful of the fact that we are all residents here, too. So we're very invested in the outcome. You have to understand that I personally feel like this is a legacy that I'm leaving behind in this town. It's very important to me. And I think I speak for everyone, all of us, that we get it right. So it's not personal. Please don't take it personally. This is where I'm raising my children. So I want this to be a beautiful pro- project. It's very important to me that we get this right. With that said, Eldad and Tom, you both said the same things about the ground space. You both seem very focused on that. And I, and it's in, there's a few points in this memo that I, I, I'm hoping we can respond to the memo.
Yeah, we can look at the plan while, while, yeah. And that would be helpful.
But.
It's like a giant blown-up plan.
There's like so much.
Sure, yeah, for me, that's.
Yeah, in fact, we could. You're on the number two.
I wanna make sure that we're getting to, to the heart of the.
Someone was saying, is that impossible?
Can't enter car history.
Uh, it's not allowed.
Car history.
Yeah.
Yes, you're allowed. In the meantime, um.
Here's the bicycle storage, which is dead, but the last.
What's the word you used glazed? What does that mean? Like, it's like a mirror?
Yeah, I'm thinking of it. Blast.
Black.
What are they putting in front of the bicycle storage? Is that material? Is that transparent or translucent material?
Sure. I don't think it has shit. There's nothing I'm putting, that's a dead.
It's also.
So Jeff. So, hang on, hang on. One of the things we have heard is that. From people is that they want the building a little smaller. So Jeff, is it, it's my understanding that now you actually do wanna make the building a little smaller. Is that correct?
Wow, I don't know.
Well, that you will be making the building a little smaller.
Uh, yeah, so there's a sewer easement. Easement, actually don't know if it's actually easement, but it's there and it's been there forever. It's a taking. So right here, there's a twenty-four inch sewer line. I nicely asked to relocate it for them. They did nicely answer with the, um.
So where is this? Where is this?
You guys are pretending the sewer line is the whole town. There, right?
And so in other words, this, the only thing right here is going to all. Yeah. Hang on, yeah, we should have one, one policy.
So, there's a sewer line here. We're most likely gonna have to go up everyone twenty feet. I literally can't.
You know what? Why don't we show it on the screen? Because I think it's, it's easier color. Thank you. So Andrew, Andrew's bringing in right now. So what is the area of the building? Andrew, you gotta move it a little so we, we can't see the right of the drawing. Oh. Hold on, yeah, we just have to move you guys.
If Andrew's on, we can take over.
If he's on, yes.
He's on.
Okay.
Hi, I'm not sure if anyone can hear me.
We just, oh, perfect, okay. So, alright, so do you wanna show us, um, oh?
Oh, okay. That, that's fine. Um, let me share my, yeah, let me share my screen real quick and please let me know.
Do you wanna stay on the topic of frontage activation or do you wanna go over to the sewer?
Well, I just wanna go to the sewer because that's gonna make it smaller. And then if we can talk about frontage activation, that would be helpful.
It's in a pain.
Yep. So, so the, the sewer line easement, which we have recently discovered exists, even though it's not been reported. Uh, and the, the survey of which is approximate at best. But from the documentation that we've been provided, uh, the easement would extend a twenty-foot section. Through the northern end of the site. And so everything within that boundary can have no permanent structure built over it. Uh, and so effectively, because it leaves such a small sliver of space to the north. Um, we are really talking about a, a fairly significant decrease of the overall extent of the building volume at the northern end. Um, uh, dimensionally, this represents approximately forty feet, thirty to forty feet of reduction. Again, we don't have the precise survey of the location of that sewer line yet, but it, it's somewhere between thirty and forty feet. That we'd be pulling the building back from the north.
How many units of loss in that?
Is, is there a physical pipe in that easement? Is it there?
Yes, yes.
For some kinds of old and storied.
Yeah, that's true. So, and is it the whole northern little triangle that's coming out?
Yeah, so, so technically, according to the easement, um, it would be possible to, to build a portion of the building here. But, but practically speaking, you know, that, that's non, not really viable. Um, and so everything, everything from, from this line. To the, to the right of the page is, for all intents purposes, this is, will be considered unbuildable area. Um, for the purposes of that easement.
So Andrew, with that, if you were to redesign the building, what's left for you? Do you have in mind, what, what change, what changes do you foresee now as a result?
Yeah, well, we're very fortunate that it, uh, did not extend further south into where we have vertical egress, uh, fire escape, uh, elevator. So the, the real, the real implications of this are at the upper floor. Um, where if we do have a, sorry, I'll, I'll sketch that again. Um, so if, if we're saying that's the, the southernmost line, it, it cuts directly through, uh, three of the one-bedroom units. And so without significant, uh, revision of the floor plan, it means a loss of three units. Uh, and it means a loss of some ground floor amenity space at the northern end of the building.
That's residential and energy space.
Correct. That's correct.
So, could we put like a, a park or a giant chessboard or something that's, you know, made out of grass? That can be, that wouldn't, that would actually allow people to use that area, but wouldn't, uh. Wouldn't violate the, the easement or the taking or whatever that is, the requirements of the sewer line?
Yeah, the instructions that we received were that no permanent structure could be erected over that easement. Um, I would say that a park space, uh, would be okay.
Uh huh.
Uh, it's not our, unfortunately, it's not our role to say what is and is not permissible, because this is a non-reported easement. Um, this really comes down to the utility, uh, given a specification as to what they will accept.
Right. I mean, I would imagine grass would be more acceptable than asphalt, so.
I would, I would agree.
I, I've built over easements. The problem is that either it needs to be removable. Or if they need to get in and dig it up, you have to pay to fix it. They won't pay to fix it. But I've never had a situation where they say you stay away, put a fence around it.
Yeah, so we just want a pocket park or some kind of nice there.
Yeah, just don't put fancy materials over it for easement, because if they have to chop it up, you gotta pay a fix.
So this is new information to me. I didn't, I didn't know about this.
Yes.
It's rather than you, I mean, I, I don't love the loss of the three units. And, um, you know. There might be losses of other units, which are potential changes to the zoning, so I would, you know. It, it's something to consider about, uh, the height considerations, the number of floors. If there's a way to avoid losing those units, that would be, uh, preferable. Should attach. So Andrew, can you go back to the ground floor and kind of walk everybody through? I think it would be helpful to understand. How and why and what everything is. I think you guys got a presentation that went very quickly. And I, we're looking at it on the plan and you see this and Andrew maybe give you a little bit of detail at first in front of you. And then maybe on the render, you'll see what the real intention of the map of the audit is. And we can talk through and look, we're not stopping something. We, we have ideas. I sat in a meeting the other day, somebody circled something on the plan, said, move this, change this, get it more fluid, and that's what happened. Great.
Alright, so let's talk about then, um, Tom and Eldad's concern about kind of public front activation.
So Andrew, you wanna start all the way to the left?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, if I can just walk through the, um, the process on, on how we arrived at this particular version of the plan. Um, obviously, it, it's pretty clear to see that the primary spatial driver of this is the parking. And of the uses of the ground floor, the, the least flexible is the parking. Uh, you know, we, we have to conform to New York State standards for, for, um, you know, parking structures. And so we have effectively a sixty-foot wide swath of parking. Uh, that strategically, I think everyone agrees, is best located towards the west of the site. Against the railroad tracks, so that, I think to everyone's point, we can maximize the utilization of the spaces along North Greeley. And so that, again, that sixty feet of, of parking, um, is essentially an established standard. And it is the most efficient way for us to get the parking. We can look at, you know, angled parking, but, but on this site, angled parking dramatically decreases the efficiency. And doesn't really gain that much depth. And so, um, you know, if you, I'll just quickly diagram, you know, that sixty feet. Will sit here. Um, you know, and so that's the, the framework to work within. And I think the, the comments that were made of, well, could we find ways to activate the entirety of North Greeley? Uh, the answer is yes, if less parking was required, frankly. Um, and the, the, when we looked at, again, so, so this is a, is a kind of a given condition of where we'd like to locate the parking. The second question is, how do you access that parking? Uh, and so, you know, one way would be to access it from the south. Uh, you know, that's maybe where the most traffic is coming from. You act, against Susan Lawrence. But, but now you're introducing a curb cut in, in exactly the location where you hope to pull the most pedestrians. Um, you're also, due to the geometry of the parking, it's now a quite long and exposed driveway. So the alternative, uh, as we're showing here, is, is to pull the parking in from the north. Uh, and so by pulling the parking in from the north, we are moving the curb cut as far away as we can for the pedestrians. And then we are utilizing the bulk of the southern end of the site. Um, for public-facing uses. And so that would be for, um, you know, a lobby entry for the residents. Which is pulled back from the street so that we can, uh, give the retail space, um, as much of a presence to the southeast as possible. And then as it tapers quite dramatically, you know, the decision that we. Uh, made very early on was to find ways to create public space along that sidewalk. Uh, and so the downside of, you know, at the middle of creating that public space is that we've now, we've compressed. The allowable space at Gray that couldn't otherwise be used for retail. And so that's why we end up with a, a ten-foot wide bike storage. Now, bike storage is a very important part of this project. Um, philosophically, as well as connections to the chat line, so.
Could you, with the new sewer easement, move some of the bike storage to the, the north? Half and half, and then increase the retail frontage a little bit, um.
Yeah, we, we could certainly look at that, 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 that's not a huge issue. And one of the other pressures, um, just as a bit of background that we've been dealing with for the past several months is. Uh, requests to decrease the amount of retail. And so originally, as Jeff mentioned, we had, I believe, eight thousand square feet of retail. We're now down to somewhere in the four thousand square foot range. And that's because of specific request to decrease the area of retail, to decrease the parking demand on downtown. And so, uh, it is a balancing act. We can certainly look at, um, elongating the retail and reshuffling it. If, if bike storage is a concern as being a detriment to the project, then it's certainly something that we could look at relocating. Um, and that could either be a residential amenity space or it could be retail. With the caveat that a, a ten-foot deep retail store is not. Uh, a conventional dimension. Uh, it is, again, we're happy to respond to these requests. And find ways to make the project, uh, as convivial as possible for downtown. That is really one of the guiding principles of how we're, we've begun to look at, um, the organization of this plan.
Mr. Robert Kowski, if I could ask a question, um. I, uh, I actually saw your website the other day and I find your, your, it's just, it's just, you know, maybe the, the swamp stuff, there's a. Is it Jesuit, um, Commons Building? I think you did. Or maybe your partner did, or your firm did, which is just, a lot of your work is very, very handsome and I commend you for it. Um, I also noticed that, um, there is a project, I think it's under construction in New Haven. Is it Dixwell Avenue? Is it?
That's correct.
Yeah, and it's, it's sort of like this, exactly sixty-nine, but it's rather than forty-five. And what's interesting about it is that it's a wedge sign, which is to my way of looking, more difficult than this one. And I noticed that in that project, and I commend you for it. That on the two principal streets, the old wedge, on one of them, you had building hobbies and retail. And I think there was a management office, which, which you're holding active uses of, we're talking about. And on the other avenue, the other front of the street, you have residential at the ground level. And the parking and the bike storage was behind that. It was in the middle of the block. And to me, that was, it's a great solution to the kinds of things that we're talking about here. And so my, my question to you is that, we're talking about parking here. But it seems to me that parking seems to be driving this. And what drives the number of spaces is what? It's the number of units. The amount of development. And I wonder if maybe we ought to be thinking differently about the amount of development. We don't need, you know, we, we don't need the whole bag of potato chips, you know? We just need enough to do what we need to do here. And there's forty-five units here, which I think one of the calculations is fifty-six units per acre. What if you've got a forty units per acre, which by anybody's measure, I think in a hamlet like this, is pretty hefty density. And we're down to forty-two now, because of the.
So twelve percent affordable housing.
I, I, that's not part of the obstacles. That, that applies to any project, so that's not really.
Well, ten percent applies to any project.
Two more units, two more, that's fine, but that, that can apply to any. That's, that's not specific to the question. So my, my question is, I mean, what if, I mean, this is actually a question of Mr. Davis. Because he's a developer and he's one who's, uh, neck is, uh, in the news on this stuff, doing the risk capital. Um, I just wonder if thirty to thirty-five minutes per acre, reducing the amount of parking that, that we have here to get parking seat. And as a consequence, you know, maybe you can rotate this parking and get it off the street.
But isn't it off the street? I, I don't, I, I don't see this. Maybe, am I, I don't know what I'm missing where it's on the street.
Yeah, the, the point, I, I can just highlight it. Um, so I think. The point that is being made is that, uh, the parking as a frontage element constitutes a section spanning this dimension.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me be clear about this. It's hard for me to, uh, a bicycle store. A bicycle store in the corridor could be any different than a parking. It's, it's essentially the same function. You're just storing bicycles instead of storing cars.
Yeah, I think we would, we would, we would characterize those as very different spaces architecturally. Um, I mean, one of them is, is vehicles, which no one wants. Um, I think bicycles are an effective singling element to show that.
But Andrew was saying that there's a potential to now take this bicycle storage that you're talking about, that's not activated space. And maybe relocate it to where.
And do well with this left over space.
To where that line is. I potentially put retail there. It's gonna be narrow, but.
Expand on retail, but he's saying he reduced the amount of retail. You have to, you have to point where retail dimensions, they have to work or they don't work.
Right.
And my concern, my concern is that, uh, uh, Mr. Robert Kowski can, you know, maybe.
No, it's Andrew Rupp.
I'm sorry. Andrew Rupp, I'm sorry.
And I think that's the name of the. From organs.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Robert.
Couldn't you have one more?
Your firm does very well.
Just some ax throwing over.
So.
I can come in here and.
One of the things you could, I, I know you could say that, like, it's hard about this. But that matters what actually works. There's a certain depth where it works or it doesn't work. If it gets too long and narrow, then actually it's hard to manage the space because you've got people doing things way over here. You don't know what's going on.
You have a really long bar though.
Right, so. I understand the developer's frustration because he has nothing to respond to. Right? He just came up with a proposal and I'm saying, we'll do this, we'll do this, we'll do this. He had a lot of challenges. It, it's a, it's a unique site. It's very long. It's covered up all the time in this model. It really shows. I mean, it is a lot of progress. It is, uh, a triangle shape. It's pressed up against the tracks. But there is space to build something awesome here. But there's nothing to respond to, which is why I think the, the, the order of operation to be wrong. And this conversation, to me, also still doesn't make sense. We, I think we need to talk about our, what we'd like to see from a policy objective, including zoning language. including zoning language that governs what we think is important. And then, if there's a proposal that meets that, fantastic. And if there's a proposal that almost meets it, but wants some variance from that zoning, then let them ask for that and say, and, and make a case to us, I understand the policy objective behind having active retail or, or, or active uses at the, at the ground floor of the site. But I can't do it, because the site is strange, so give me a little bit of flexibility, and I'll tell you exactly how we're gonna get at your policy. To me, that's the way this needs to work. If you just keep going back and forth with them, saying, reduce the, the number of units, or now you have to deal with this, then it's, it, it, to, to me, it doesn't make sense.
So to me, and maybe we have to tinker with the legislation a little bit, but it does, this plan, the way it's drawn, at least somewhat, does get to some of that public policy, right? Because it, this, to me, is all activated space until you get to the bike rack. Okay, once, and look, you gotta have a way to get in, and maybe it can tinker with where this entrance to the garage is, but to me, that's not that much space, and frankly, it's a lot better than the giant parking lot that's there right now, which is completely not activated space. So to me, if you have all this retail with the parking behind it, and let's say we can move this bicycle space and put something right there, I don't know what, to me, that is public policy, because we're adding seating areas, we're adding places for people to congregate, we're adding retail, we're adding the residential. So this is actually filling a lot of the public policy that I, and maybe we need to tinker with the way it's written in the legislation, to your point, but I think that this is filling a lot of those public policy issues that I know the town board was concerned about, and I know residents want.
So I, I completely agree with the initiative here to get sort of more public space out of the sidewalk, out of the public realm, wherever it goes. I think that's, that's true. My concern about this particular, now we're getting outside of that, but this particular design is that the overhangs in this design have portions of this seating area underneath this three-story building. And the way, if you look at the shadow studies, and the shadow studies are only for the heat logs, they're not for the visual solar. Where the heat log show that this is almost always in shadow, the seating area will fall, especially in winter.
That's great, for some of my paintings alert. Because everyone sits in front of great stuff, like, oh my God, it's so sunny, there's no shade at all. Oh, I am listening, but I, there's still sun in the winter. There's still sun in the window.
It's, this whole thing will be in shape. This will be in shape, so the public spaces are not designed, and I'm, it's not just making, I mean, there's a whole canon of literature and practice that tells us this, that these spaces are not properly designed for the climate, and it's, and not properly located for the climate. And to build these spaces, my fear is, is it's going to be something which is going to be not as used as we hope it will be used, and it's not gonna contribute to the walkability, all those terms that we have been talking about for quite a long time, and our vision for the town. I just don't see these spaces contributing to that. And, you know, either it's a consequence of the architectural design, that these are leftover spaces, or they're intentional, in a way it doesn't matter. I just don't think that they're going to be important the way we think that they're going to be.
I understand, but realistically, I mean, people aren't sitting out in the winter. I mean, you do a little bit, but we see it here that nobody's sitting out in the winter, unless it happens to be a nice day.
Well, yeah, and Susan Lawrence, I just see people sitting out, Susan Lawrence all the time, even if the weather's not good.
Well, they, they take the things away. I mean, nobody's, it's not even there in the winter.
All right, I guess I, I guess.
Well, no, no, I, I understand, but I'm saying, so where would it need to be to be in the sun?
Well, it would need to be out of a pocket that is formed here on the northeastern, sort of a little bit northeastern, I think it is, orientation here. Because once you get past there, that's pretty much over, these spaces.
Does, does, do your comments right now sync up with, and, and forgive me, I, I, I'm I'm asking to say, no, no, sync up with your concerns about the ground floor stuff? Is that, are we talking about different things, or we're talking about the same thing? Okay, so I wanna stay on that then, and then figure out how we can adjust for it in the legislation to account for what Eldad is saying. The legislation has to work as a vision for what we want here. And since you're both talking about these things, how do we, how do we make that work in the legislation?
So I think what we would need to do, if, if we're running pursuit of this, is we would need to have something in the legislation that a, a reserve, a, with restrictions, stipulations on a zone in the ground for the building, from the building frontage, deep, deep enough into the, uh, into the, the building, to have it moved for other land uses, or residential, or retail, or office, or whatever that might be. You need to have a dimension that actually is usable. And for residential, twenty-five feet.
Stanley, Bob, you have opinions?
Yeah, I do.
And can you reference it to the, I'm a very visual person, to how that picture looks with the twenty, what you're talking about, with the twenty-five feet? So, no, no, I see it, but like the overhang.
So what about the overhang?
They're saying you need twenty-five feet before you hit the overhang?
I didn't say that.
No, I'm asking.
I don't, no, I'm not sure what you're referring to there.
I would just, so go ahead, okay. So a lot of the things you guys are saying, from an academic standpoint, make a lot of sense in there. And I'll disagree with you, but we have here a specific isolated site. And, and it's, and it's not always gonna work, uh, on the academics. You, you can't make, you can't twist and pull and move the parameters, as you said. And, and I'm afraid some of the dimensions that you put in, which makes sense if you've got a giant talent to work on, I wouldn't disagree with, but some of those dimensions are gonna cause the project to fail. You know, when I, I sit on both sides of the table, this is for Jab, I'm in front of a works like here, right? I've got honey scars and, you know, rotten tomatoes from there. So, you know, I appreciate sitting on the town side and also on the developer's side. I actually say this when I go to hearings, it kind of gets a chuckle out of people, but it's true. But, but if, if, if a board is gonna sit in isolation and try to put rules and wish lists together in an academic standpoint, and I call it academic because the site doesn't allow for some of those dimensions, let me finish, please. Then you're setting up, then it doesn't work, you're not gonna get a project built. Parking is always, almost always, the driver of residential projects, always, no matter how big, big urban, it's always the driver. It's unfortunate, because it's not something communities really like, it's a necessary evil in a sense, but it is a necessary evil.
Yeah.
You've cut down some of the parking, you've got one point something spaces per unit. There's always an option, you could, you could push the wrapper deeper and have a single load of parking in the wish of this, but then you're gonna have less parking in the building, what I've read, a lot of people don't like that.
Or fewer units.
Okay, fewer units. I'm not arguing, on, on the town side, it would be nice to maybe have a more modest proposal. I can tell you I'm not defending you, but on the developer's side, there's an economics. It's expensive to do all sorts of things, and at some point, a project will get so small, or hit that line where the developer will say, it just doesn't make sense, I'm not gonna do this, and then you're left with nothing. So it's always, I think, a balancing act, that when you've got a project that's a single identified site, there is that opportunity for push and pull. And you're probably frustrated, because it, it, it's, I feel it, I understand it, but there has to be that back and forth where the town expresses their concepts and their wishes, and like you're doing, developer sometimes can meet you halfway, sometimes can't, and, and you try to make that come. Nothing's ever perfect, no design is ever perfect. You know, I can tell you, even as a developer, we, it, it's just not, it's, nothing is ever perfect. But you can make it good enough, and you can make it good enough where you check most of the boxes, and the community's happy with the project. You check enough boxes with developers willing to invest and spend money to build the project, not just, not just design it with no promises of getting approvals, but then, you know, get a construction on it, and build the project. So I, I think it's that balancing act, and I think the conversation we're having with him in the room is a healthy thing.
I totally agree. And my, my, my question, suggestion is that we have, like, been enough on the other side of the sea pole that there is, is this process is heavily, heavily loaded by the proposal, which is a promise. And we're, in my opinion, we're trying to catch up with the other things that belong on that balance beam. And in my opinion, we are far from getting there in the current draft legislation. And I, listen, I fully respect developers, I've worked with them, and I've worked on both sides of the state before, my whole life. I understand them, I understand return on investment, I understand rate of return, I accept all this. Finance tax, I get it, I get it, I understand it. But at the same time, we have an obligation, I think, to be sure that when that person comes to the table, when that risk capital comes to the table, that it's risk, that that capital is being spent not only for the proper benefit of the property owner, but for the proper benefit of the town, and what the town wants this neighborhood, I'm gonna call it neighborhood, because I think that's what attention to be, not what the town wants this neighborhood to be. And we're trying to, we are trying to articulate what we think that, they killed that, or is, yeah, I, I got actually directions to the planning board to talk about this stuff, so I think they agree also. We are trying to, to, to figure out, we think we know what we want it to be, or take a suggestion. All we're asking for is language in the zoning text in order to put that in place and have the capital and the development incentives. Give you development incentives, I, you know, nothing here is, we don't have to do any of this. This is all something which we are giving to a developer, to a property owner. And we, I think, have a right to expect something in return. It's what that something is, and my concern is that the, the, the longer we wait to articulate that, we're gonna miss the opportunity. And we need to articulate, I think we need to articulate that now and put it in zoning, and then be in a position to, because once you get past zone, once somebody in the place, you're actually in a negotiation. And believing, we know this whole thing, because we are negotiating all the time.
But why not negotiate as part of writing the zoning, otherwise you're gonna go through an effort to write something that's not gonna go anywhere.
Why do you say that? Why do you assume that?
Because I, I've lived it a lot of times.
And so you're telling me that you don't think that the, the, this town board, this, this planning board can.
But you've got, you've got the owner at the table, so why not work with them? I, I'm on his side, because I'm, I disagree with a lot of what you're saying, I'm just, I guess this may not a way to get, you know, to a successful land.
Let me ask you a question, and this should be for Mr. Rob, and Mr. Davis all over. If you could, if you could do the things that we're talking about, and I, I kinda guess that you're saying that are bad things, but they not, may not be achievable. If you could do the things we're talking about, and do it with thirty-five units, as opposed to forty-three units or forty-two units, or do it with thirty-three units, would that be acceptable?
Well, I can answer that, I'm not the one doing the investing, but I, I would think that if you're cutting back down on the units aggressively, you may have a problem, but that's not for me to answer.
I don't know, that's forty units per acre. Drive around town, go over, go over to Pleasantville, go up to Peekskill, people are building three-story developments all over the communities.
Well, we know what the max is, right? We know how many, and now we know that it's probably gonna be closer to forty-two because of what you're losing because of the sewage. So is there, is there a number? How low would you go?
I, I can say this, I came here tonight, we got your memo, we'll stop what we're doing, they answered the memo, there's exhibits too. We're doing the same dance we've been doing for a year. You guys want like forty-five units, you want it to be less, you gave us a bunch of parameters, instead of forty-three feet, in our courtyard, you want fifty feet. There's things that are in this memo, we cannot build a building, we failed when getting to the legislature. Can we pause for one second? I did, we did not say, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, Tom, what else, go ahead.
He's, I don't think he is, it's not, and I don't want to share the demo, but that was like for discussion here for the working.
I think it was.
Bob Kirkwood shared it. No, he shared it to everybody.
Well, everybody, meaning the working group?
No, I think it went to the developer.
And ready to respond in?
I mean, the question to developers. How, how could you be in the middle and, and achieve some of these things? Maybe shrink the budget a little bit so that you can check some of the boxes, and then you can get a project.
So, and we've been doing this, first of all, we came to the more retail parking conversation, came up that the commercial's gonna cause parking issues, and said, okay, why don't we shrink the retail, because that seems to be innovative, so we started playing with the retail to make it best for you there. We, we're trying to figure out where the push and pull is to make it work. It seems to be that the unit count is the biggest issue, because a lot of what's in here, that's right, called, right, incentive. You could have just said, we don't want forty-five units.
That's necessarily it, though, I don't, I actually disagree with you, because some, some people in this room would like to see more units. And some people in this room actually just wanted to be a more community-friendly usable space. And because we want it to be a more community-friendly active space, just as a consequence of that, may take some tweaking, some shrinking to accommodate that. So I don't want you to think that it's just screwed this, we don't want this many units, but I'm asking rightly.
The technicality in here, I'm talking straight technical, we spent hours doing this, the technicalities of things in here with setbacks, distances between windows of units will cause the units to not be livable because of the distance they need and the courtyard size, those actual units will not work properly. And again, we did this very quickly to be able to come here to respond. That being said, we're here.
Right.
We showed up to try to figure out how to work together. And so the overarching question is, is the unit count, the street, look, we want retail, we want it to work. My overarching, you have residents upstairs, they want something to go down to, we want people to come down the street. We want to figure out, make it the best, the best we're ever.
If it was a deeper bathroom, and see a more activated storefront, you could even fit it, it just goes in the parking, so maybe the parking picks up a few units, and then you get those, like.
We have one-to-one parking for apartments right now, and then, I'm just talking current unit counts, I think we have eight or nine additional spots. You need a couple units for the retail, right? If we have more retail, we need more parking. If everybody can agree, let's just follow that, and we don't talk about parking anymore, we can throw some more retail in there. But bike storage, we can figure out how to move. We have to rejigger everything, if I can't get them to move the sewer, that's there. Maybe I can work some magic, guys who did the sewer in the city, very close friends, we can try again, who knows? If we can't, we lose some units, and we have to move everything around. We thought we did a good job of hiding it. I promise you, if, if you actually look at it, you don't know there's there, you just look at it.
Hiding the parking.
No, hiding this area, this is an outdoor park, the glazing behind it, you don't know there's bike stores. I, I guess, I guess, uh, but that being said, I'm trying to figure it out.
Well, I understand it's hard.
I'd love to, for one second, I've listened all night. Is it straight unit count, and how many units, and is it thirty-five that you guys are saying you want as a plan? Look, I did not say reduce the units. I understand that, that's, that may be a result.
But it was a very calculated, I mean, if you want this to exist.
One of the writers, I think so.
Understand that, that's not the, the request. We're not looking to cut your building down, nor to cut a building down, and I have spent tonight, and for more, we want to see more units here. But that to us is not what's driving our decision-making process. I understand why it's for you, and just like several of the other managers in our state, I earn my life by working with and supporting those. And so I want you to be successful, but as my responsibility on the planning board is, is to the town, because we're trying to figure out what works best for the town.
I think the, the thought, what Jeff's reacting to, is that some of the requirements proposed in your memo can only be accomplished if the size of the, the number of units is reduced. So even though you're not saying you wanna reduce it, there's no way i- i- in a, in essence, is reducing it because there's no way to accomplish those stated requests without.
Right, so, okay. Let's, let's.
That's what he said.
But, but that's what you mean.
Now it's out, so.
But we're still talking around it.
Wait, but we're not. Exactly, okay, fine, whatever, but whether, that, whether we want to be smaller, we want you to cut the units, or whether we want it to be a better usable space, just on that, we're all gonna have to give a little and take a little bit, right? So what is, what is the number?
Can I, can I?
Go ahead.
Can I just try and clarify something?
Yes.
The objective, the, the consequence, this is exactly right, the consequence of the things that we put in here is that you would not. The consequence of the things that we put in here is that you would not be able to get here forty-three, forty-four, forty-five units under those stipulations. Absolutely true. The reason that they were there is that in order for us to have what we think is an active street, that's what the twenty-five, the twenty-five foot state tax is all about. The, the provision for stipulation about fifty feet, but we, we weren't saying that you had to make these fifty feet. We were just, we were saying that if you're going to do a gap, make it fifty feet. But it, but it calls into question your very design, because I know you can't do it without losing significant value in this. So, you, you meant, the reason we think that fifty feet is a good number, because I don't think, and I'm not sure fifty feet is a good number. My opinion is, if you look at, if you look at the model, at least it thinks it's fine, but if you look at the model, the depth of your courtyard. And they're forty-two, forty-three, forty-two.
I mean, the width, I mean, the two, the fingers.
Yeah, forty-three feet, forty-three feet. They're very deep, and the first one especially. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get around the notion that somebody would want to come to Chappaqua. Come to this force we live in, and we live in that environment. I understand this development model for a place of great density, like Newark or White Plains or someplace where you have to build that way and people are gonna live that way. Because they have the benefits of being a newer city, but you know, it's for New York City. I don't know, it's thirty feet.
And what's the Chappaqua, I think they're a lot closer, aren't they?
For legal light in here, it's thirty feet.
Even up in Chappaqua, it's an urban, actually, I guess.
No, I'm not talking about law lines, we're in the same law.
So, okay.
I'm sorry, that's, yeah. Well, I didn't understand what the fifty feet window to window was for.
The fifty feet window to window was to suggest that forty feet is not enough, because this is Chappaqua. Because we are gonna make our rules, because we don't, we don't think that it's appropriate for us to be building this kind of housing in our town.
But it's a very, I'm saying, for thirty, thirty feet, for legal light in here, this New York City, so if you go forty feet, you're not.
Okay, I understand, you're very excited.
Okay, so, the. But I think to get the density, you're gonna have to go somewhere.
What density?
To, to get the, to increase the number of units.
In what, what density? Well, that's the point. So, if we don't want density, why is this an issue? We ought to figure out what density.
Well, you have to, you have to decide how close can they stay.
No, you have to decide if you, if, if this is, if this is the design.
I just wanna question, does the whole planning board agree that it needs to be fifty feet to cut down the density?
I, I, so I, I want to clarify what we're talking about. What we're talking about is, is the distance, uh, window to window, the density is kind of courtyard above the ground floor. There's, uh, you know, a concern, uh, that it's a housing type of, that it may not be appropriate. I, I don't share that concern, um, and you know, I've said before that what happens above the ground floor is much less of a concern for me. So, I'm not gonna, in time, you can talk about why I think it's, uh, important. I will say that I I actually don't think that it's thirty feet for New York City, window to window. Yes, but it's, I know it's. Well, we can talk about that. Yeah, lot of line windows don't count for legal light there, so.
And, and the Chappaqua code is, if it's designed based on current code in place, we would have to only add forty feet. Okay, I, I'm gonna speak your language, and I'll get the chill for this. I don't think so. Make it forty feet, I don't care. It's really not the driving issue.
Well, three feet isn't gonna change the project, except the lots of units.
No, we're, we're forty feet right now. Forty-three, forty-two, whatever this pieces of four years.
So, how do we, how do we address the ground? Let's, well, since we, we were making headway, I thought, on the ground floor were issues. Let's continue to, to.
Well, if you increase the ground for retail, you can easily do it, but it's at the expense of parking. And by losing parking, just like losing dimensions or creating dimensions, you lose units. So, there's a trade-off between less parking, less units, more retail, more activation, you can do that.
If you said you're losing three units, then by definition, you lose three parking spots.
I think we need to reevaluate it, if we have to lose that corner and move that amenity space, which is the residential space, and move the bike area. And if we add more retail, I think let us play with it to see what we can do. I also think we should do, 'cause I don't think there's a rendering of this area. This area Andrew had up on the screen, it shows you what this looks like. We have a rendering of it from afar for this area to show what it looks like activated. And let us look at activating it, I, I'm hearing the concerns, let us look at activating. You don't have to ask me twice.
Okay.
I mean, what, the anecdotal thing where I said something wasn't activated, it was a corner to access to a garage that I made them extend the retail piece in front of it, and I said somebody can go down and around to get their parking, because there's six L A stations, but I'm happy to activate it. Yeah, I fought in most meetings against people coming to take the retail, I was saying, I want more retail. My problem is not rented, I'll figure it out. This, I think, driving traffic down the street activates it. Makes it better for the residential people, it needs to be activated. It needs outdoor space, it needs to be a good experience for the community. That's what this was supposed to be, a poppy park, that's what this is designed to be. This is supposed to be an outdoor public area, and this was supposed to be. We, we were trying to do that. If we fail at doing so, I just go back and try to do that.
It's like we can move this bicycle storage, Andrew thinks that might be pretty easy. If you're losing three apartments, let's say, for that little triangle area, potentially you can actually even lose one or two parking spots for the three units. And then expand the retail.
Maybe, you know.
And that would get to your, your concern, Tom, about activating the whole area.
There are you guys talking about it while Andrew was saying, maybe there's some way to move the entrance to the parking down further. Uh, uh, I don't know, let us, let us, like, we now understand the street skate concern for the first time ever. I'm on board to make this street better, like.
Okay.
We think the street activated is a great thing.
Was, was I carrying that, this one, eight thousand, four thousand retail, what, what's that conversation?
We started with eight thousand square feet. We got concerns that it was too much, and then the parking conversation. I mean, at one point, we were talking about building a parking garage across the street, because we need parking, we need parking, we need parking, the town needs more parking.
So, just so we don't put him in circles, anyway, if he came back with six thousand people, would we be happy, or some people think it's too much?
You know.
The downtown merchants unhappy with competition.
I, I think, and, and I, I also saw in your memo that you didn't wanna require the electric car share. To me, I personally think that's important, because if we're concerned about parking, I know, I think I was telling Ally earlier, like, on the weekends, I can get by with one car, with me and my husband, because then if we lived here, we could get by with one car period, because he would walk to the train station. But, and if there was a car share, so that he could go, you know, do whatever he wants to do at some when we're not together, I think that would be helpful and would actually eliminate the need for me, for instance, to have an extra car.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree. Maybe the confusion that they've caused is not that there shouldn't be car share, but it shouldn't be used in lieu of a one space per unit town.
You take it with this credit.
I know, there should be one space, at least one space, yeah, I think we need both.
Okay.
Um, but then, you know, the other thought, and I was sitting downtown today thinking about this. You know, I went into a bunch of different stores, and none of them have designated parking, right? I went into Desires, I went into Petticoat Lane, I went into Faso. None of those places have dedicated parking for those retail establishments. And, you know, I, I, so I don't know how fair it is to then require, other than the residential, that we're asking them to put in retail, and we're asking them to increase the retail now, but then to say, well, then you gotta find parking. I personally think that we have a lot that, you know, is not gonna be full again with people commuting five days a week, a hundred percent.
So, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, especially if we are going to ask Mr. Davis to do a diner, which is a heavy parking load. If we're gonna pass that, you know, then we ought to step up and say, we will find parking in the parking district for you. You don't have to be part of it, you don't have to sign them in the parking district, but we actually have an excess number of space, we will be able to absorb those and take that requirement off the table for Mr. Davis.
Well, I think they should sign with the parking district, because I think we want some of that money at least.
But you suggested changing some of those spots.
No, I did, I did, but I mean, that's gonna cost the town money, so if you're paying a little bit into a district, we can use that money.
So, you can pay the market?
So, are there retail parking inside this? Is that why it's? Yeah, I wouldn't think that's necessary either. If I was going to grab something here, someone, I wanna drive into an apartment building and go in a bar. Why would I do that? Yeah, why would I do that? I don't think it would cost to do that, and security for the residential, I don't think that's a good thing. I wouldn't wanna do that if I own the building.
Plus, it's basing how many retail parking spots are available in a mall.
You know, I was in the city yesterday, not that this is the city, but I was happy I found a spot, you know, ten blocks from where I need to be. And other than the orange sky, it wasn't an issue walking, you know. So, we happened to have, and we've been talking on the town board about rejiggering some of those spaces that are now, not rejiggering, but moving, some of those spaces, when you drive into the train station to the right, that are now daily parking, like behind the station. Yeah, and Taco, and making those general three-hour parking. And then, we're still talking about it, and then where, we have to move those spots. So, we're gonna move those spots, we're trying to figure out where.
I think we could be supportive of that.
To do that.
Absolutely.
And that would buy a lot of space that would be available for the three-hour parking.
So, I, I asked a rhetorical question earlier, and, which was, if you could do the things that we're talking about here on the street public, to activate the street and do it in a way that, um, maybe has a better chance of success than otherwise. Um, and you would suffer a suffering. The consequence would be a reduction of units, which is what Mr. Davis rightly is getting to. Would, how would, I understand Mr. Davis' point, but I would like to know what our point of view about that is. And your answer was, well, I don't know if it's important.
No, I, I, I'm just hypothesizing that there are economics developed, and I'm not a template, I'm a developer, but I'm a developer. And I, I think the whole goal here should be this push-pull with him in the room and a conversation, for him to go back and revise it. Maybe there'll be a couple of times, and then hopefully get the project that works, so.
That's fine, I, I, I got it. And my point is, you know, the balance, where, where, where do we stand on all this stuff of a push-pull? I don't think that push-pull ought to happen in zoning. I think it ought to happen after zoning, and if there's a hardship, then, then Mr. Davis is more than welcome to make the hardship case. I think it's more important for the town to say what they think is the best conclusion for the town's sake. And in this particular case, where I learned about architecture, we're talking about land, land is somewhere on the floor. And if it ends up being thirty-five units, as opposed to forty-three units, and, and Mr. Davis says, you know, I can't build, I'm walking. Well, he can make the hardship case, or he walks in, somebody else comes in. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not responsible for that.
Yeah, but I think, uh, where he started, he said he wanted earlier, is to do site plan approval and zoning simultaneously. And you get to a point, let, let me talk, you've been, you've been sowing a conversation.
No, I think you've done a lot of talking too. You've done a lot of what I'm saying.
Um, I, I, I think there's a dialogue, a constructive dialogue, where direction is given, wishes are given to the developer, where you can try to accommodate those, and you go back and forth a few times, hopefully not too long painful, but enough that the town and the developer can reach, uh, a project that, that works, to everybody's satisfaction.
I completely agree, as, as a matter of the process of how you get there. And my argument is that we ought to figure out what we want and put that place in zoning, and then have the developer respond to it. So, uh.
Yeah, I just don't think that's productive.
Well, I think that they, they now have.
But, but that zoning, but not on, on a single project.
It's a solid.
I think the developer now has direction, right? Because we wanna activate that street, but we wanna add housing book, the housing compact got heated, it's coming back. We need to build housing, and there's a housing shortage, and. And, but, but to activate this a little more, I think we do have direction now. We'll get, you know, to Tom's point and Eldad's point, we remove this bike rack, we can maybe put more retail in. Maybe we can take a spot or two from in there, they'll tinker with it and figure out how we get that kind of flow that you're talking about, that'll increase the vitality. And then frankly, if there's a little park at the end, it might bring people there, and then eventually if, you know, some of the, the piece next to it gets developed, that hopefully will bring more of a reason for people to continue walking down that street. And then you're gonna look at the parking lot across the street.
I'm, I'm curious, you know, now that there is, um, you know, a little bit more direct language from the planning board, right? You, now Jeff have a better understanding of what the goal is that we're trying to achieve. You know, you may come back to us after tinkering, and some of the things that were requested here, now you meet them, and now we can adopt them into the legislation. You know, there's, there's, I, I'm just curious to see where this meeting takes us. I'm curious to see what it is.
So, I'm getting to, I understand, activate the street. I, I get where you're going, but is your overarching still in result of less units? No.
No, I don't think anybody.
If I can activate the street and everybody's happy with it, and it's forty-five units, you're good. Or is it, I'm gonna do that, and then it's still gonna come back with, because there's things in here that have nothing to do with the street wall. There's things in here that have nothing to do with the street, but have everything to do with upstairs. Right, so, I, I'm lost here.
No, I, I, I don't blame the big ball. And the reason is because we are focused, you know, on the street, and there are implications in this, which will go to what is above or above with respect to the street wall, the percentage of, of length of the street wall, which is occupied by building frontage as opposed to the voids. And our number is somewhere between seven to eighty-five percent, which is not that. And we have a reason for that, it's not.
I'm sorry, seventy to eighty percent, five percent of what?
Of the building frontage along North Green. That seventy-five to eighty-five percent of the building frontage would be within a ten-foot zone of the property line.
Okay.
And that is a typical sort of townscape street wall. I mean, that's how towns are built, I mean, that's how Manhattan's built, I remember Manhattan, but there are terrific streets, like in, in the Village, which are three-story streets, which are essentially that. And there are lots of reasons that maybe we don't wanna go through right now, but there are lots of reasons why that's important, and I'd be happy to try and explain that. But that does get to, in the end, that does get to, again, the number of units. Because the, what's the reason the, the Mr. Davis, Mr. Robb were able to get the units here is they were separating the mass of the building in order to get enough daylight into the interior mass in order to get all those units. The consequences of that, I think it's against a building, it's a logical building, I think that it, I don't think it belongs here. I just don't think it belongs to have these looming masses over the street that we are hopefully trying to make it plus a place to walk. If you take the, I think there's a four hundred, maybe the three hundred ninety-foot length, I forget, something around four hundred.
So, four seventeen for the property, property line.
So, if you, you take that as, for example, as a street wall, which is within ten feet of the property line, so, or if you just use that for now. If you take the linear dimension of the facade that wraps that space, you're close to seven hundred feet, that wraps that building. That's a seven hundred foot long facade of an architecture which is uniform. And it's something which is, I think, very apparent to, and very impactful to the scale of the street. It's not a four hundred foot long facade, it's a seven, almost seven hundred foot long facade, because of the consequences of what's been done there. I think that that's a big problem. And that's why I think that we need to be looking at traditional ways of designing streets, not ways to put, uh, projects into a town, into a street, and say that, well, we got our forty-five minutes, and we did a good job. And so, my question was. And say that, well, we got our forty five minutes, and we did a good job, and so my question was, in doing these. Working with the, the planning board, bringing together, our question was, well, what if, if we take these ideas and we put them in place, and then. Figure out what you get out of that, what do you get out of that? And we did some, I did something, and we, this is what we got, we got thirty five units out. And it's a street wall, but your public corridor is down there.
So you went to design, you designed, so like corridor, this, this first floor.
Oh, you didn't have all seven plans. So there's a second floor. And that's typical form of these spaces here, so again, your corridor is facing the railroad track. Now you have units which have, are facing the street. Rather than facing a courtyard.
Some, some, some guys are facing their railroad tracks.
Yeah, well, you know, those don't open.
Definitely, they don't, so you've got, you've got. In this, in this drawing, it's not even a plan, right, just a drawing, sure, you've got six units here which face this way. And six units facing that way, and I think there are thirty five units in that, so you're taking thirty five, six way, you're doing like twenty, twenty nine units.
My, my whole point upon this place is, it's, it's cruel, you know, every time the train comes in, it's blasting along, you know. So that unit, any unit that's facing the track, I think is in, Harold having the same uh, kind of degraded.
But in, in, in this game, you have units facing this way also.
I know, but they don't have windows facing the.
There's six units facing the train tracks.
I, so I'm not, I'm not an architect, but I'm, I'm an architecture aficionado. I would argue that that looks more massive from the street level than this current proposal, because you've got one giant long. Building as opposed to those. Inner courtyards.
Well, I'll argue the, the, the giant wall buildings are, if you take a, a, a row houses, and in town. Two story, three story row houses in any town. From intersection to intersection, that's one, essentially, that's one building. Now, it's by, by party walls, but it's essentially one building. No different than this.
Very, very.
It's a multiple dwell, yeah, very.
Well, it's. It's a multiple dwell, you're, you don't have the stoops, you don't have the real estate stoops, you don't have to. I can't tell from the sketch.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's fair, but you have stoops, you have real estate stoops, you have, instead of the lobby being now, now like.
But who's the stoop for?
It's for the, the units.
Plus, not for the public.
Where's your retail space there?
Do you have any retail space? You've, you've resented, but the public's, it's gonna sit on some.
Our super box.
No.
Area hasn't been.
Okay.
The public space, this was interesting. The public space, and this is where I think the town can really do something here. Um, and it's not uncommon for this to happen, it happens actually in places like Manhattan, where, especially since COVID, where. Actually, there is a parking, a portion of the parking lane, which is taken and reserved for public space. And for instance, it could be.
Like the outdoor restaurants?
Yeah, like for instance, you could, this could be the dining area, outdoor dining area, or the diner.
Then that's taking away, then they're actively taking away parking.
Yeah, these spaces, but for what purpose, so what, I mean, we just decided we had an excessive.
No, but this, you're talking about the diner, so in our scenario.
What are your thoughts on that? I'd love to hear from there.
In our scenario where we set back this, the building so that the outdoor dining area. The outdoor dining area is set back, so we're taking away from our building to give it to the town. You're taking from the town to give it to the building essentially, we've given it here, and here, and here, inset, sorry.
No, I understand that.
We're doing it here to create these parkers, and this long one here, similar to what Susan Moore, to create these outdoor. Areas from the building.
So my, my point again was that these are, I think, these are really not, not good spaces.
So then what about your western terrace, I'm sorry, the western terrace, the second floor.
This one here. Between the building and the rail. That's gonna be in shade.
Well, it'll be in shade until the afternoon, and then the storm is on.
You've, you've got the raised. And then you've got all of this, you know, however high that is.
I just don't see that.
Why would people?
Well, it's, it's like the terrace they threw at the North End and Post Place.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine, if you don't do it, then you don't have to build the, the concrete deck, because this parking can be. And we are, this doesn't have to be covered, this stuff does, because it's our building, this doesn't have to be covered. Concerned about that, zero carbon, the most, aren't that expensive? I just wish our, our stormwater management never figured it out. Which is not a, so possible. I guess, I guess, I'm not saying do this plan.
No, I, I.
No, it's just meant to be a demonstration.
But, but again, I, you said, don't talk, you don't care about the architecture, but I think the, I don't wanna say brilliant, but I think the. Uh, commendable move, uh, I don't know, Ganski did at the beginning, was to put the public corridor by the railroad track, and that was. A complete barrier for all the units to face this, to face the town, face the street. And just, just be away from them, because I think Huntsland is a total disaster.
Yeah, but this was, okay, I, I know this dream, I mean, we bought the planning report, Huntsland, we did it short term, I mean, all that came in.
You take that as the premise of the design, I think that was maybe their first thought, their, their knee jerk reaction, this is what we did. And from there, they developed this building, and, and whether it was. Serated or, or whatever, for whatever reason, I think they did it just um, to. To make it less massive on the street.
So we have.
And give it more, make it, make it as massive as you want on the railroad side, I mean, who cares?
So. This particular. Um, demonstration, not a building suggestion, or building plan, this particular demonstration. Result, ends up with two units which actually aren't on the project to the railroad tracks, but their orientation. Though that can be solved, here, because it has some crunch here, their orientation is actually north-south, not the railroad tracks. So. I'm questioning whether, or it questions whether we need to have forty five units in this particular design. Or, or something else that maybe gives up part of the balance unit, gives up.
And I, and I agree, and I see that, I think that could work, but I would, you know, like I said, I, I like how this design is developed. Um, I think if they keep all those principles intact, but increase the retail further north, reduce some of the parking. Uh, you know, I think that's where the balancing comes in, I don't think you're gonna retail all the way to the end, I mean, the site just is like.
Okay, you're fine.
Uh, you're just gonna, well, you're gonna end up with these in here, and you're gonna end up with a lobby here, you're gonna have a lobby in this end.
So, then, let's go back.
And maybe you're gonna have parking, and then maybe you're gonna have, let's say, sixty people left over.
And then it's.
And you have bike parking, you have uh, a requirement, a minimum requirement.
Oh, it is all, and, and for you.
I don't think we have a bike parking or car, we don't have a bike or a, or a lot.
I mean, it's good. It looks good, but there's no bike lanes.
Right.
No, um, I mean, there's some. There was a conversation about bike.
It's a lot of space, especially if they're not required.
I, I think it should be in the United States or something.
Be those scooters that you see in all the towns that you like.
And, and again, I, I.
You know, it's like the bikes, but they're now.
I like the chair line.
I mean, I.
They can have.
If you double on by, I mean, you can figure out.
Off street, right, the parking, it says a minimum of one enclosed off-street bicycle parking space shall be provided for each residential unit.
A minimum of one per unit?
But it's not enough current.
Oh, but that's not our, that's in the legislation. Oh.
I don't like to bike, except in apartments, you don't bike at my side, of course.
I don't have to see it.
I thought the treadmill.
I'm the trailer.
It looks like. It looks like a project, and this project landed in our town, and I just wonder.
When you go to your very old towns, very old buildings. You see a lot of modern architecture inserted in there or next to it, and it's not adequate.
Yeah, the right, the right application, and the Dutch really did this, I mean, I, I got in there too, yeah, and so. And I'm questioning the principle, I'm not saying the modern architecture is bad, but I agree with you guys, and I think.
I know, I know.
Let me tell them, it's, it's, it's the mass of this, and the fact that it all looks like the, the seven hundred feet of units.
I, I don't agree that it's seven hundred feet, I mean, separating it, you're, you're carving away that mass to create, but you're looking at. Yes, and then the whole roof is a, is a carved form too, it could be said.
Which is unnecessary, I mean, why are we so?
Because you can see it, you can see it from the street, you know, from the top.
One forty nine, really.
So I mean, look at, look at the top of Hunts Place.
I'm sorry, you see it from a few units which face, and we're doing that, or have other people living down, you can't.
But the worst thing is seeing the, or it's Hunts Place, and it's, it's roofs, whatever, and I always thought it was awful, but then now you see. Condensing units, you see all the PVC vent pipes and everything, it's just.
I know, okay, I'm not proposing Hunts Place as a model for anything, so I, well, I don't think so.
Well, that is one of my concerns, when you say it's, it's not needed, but if they're gonna do a beautiful green roof, you gotta hide everything else.
Everything is driven.
You have to hide.
Well, I guess, if you're gonna do, but again. You know, it, it's, it's what you solve for, me as an architect, you know, it's what you solve for, what do you, what do you want to solve for? And if you decide, well, we have enough green roofs, then you get that roof, but when you give up in order to have that, what is it the consequences ensues? And, and, like, why isn't it, why isn't it solar? It, it's good, absolutely.
There was a law about interest rating the solar. Talked about this at the last public hearing, they talked about this at the last public.
Big black solar down already. For.
Andrew, I'm not, I'm not even, but my mom.
But they're not gonna be trying to, even though those nice fastened roof shapes I know.
Andrew is much smarter than me a thousand times over, I just know you need a lot of area to get a few kilowatts, yeah.
Andrew, how is the roof working with solar?
Yeah, so there are a few ways that we could look at how this project meets the renewable energy goals that are stated in the current draft of the NG zero legislation. Specifically, they are at, the, the current draft requires it to meet the I E C C net zero carbon requirements. Which require that the, the building is powered by one hundred percent renewable energy, that can be a combination of onsite. Onsite generated energy and purchased energy, and so one. Solution that would be explored during the design process would be utilizing bio-solar roofs. Where you're using solar panels in conjunction with the green roofs, which are a, a proven system that has a, a myriad of benefits. For both systems, um, and as Jeff mentioned, we, we gave a fairly thorough. Memo about this and a presentation at the last meeting, um, and I'm happy to go into that again. Um, it's an option that we would explore.
Also, you, you, you write zoning, people look for, sometimes look both ways, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what you're saying, but. Sometimes people can solve a problem in a way that hadn't been thought about or expected, and if you do it, recycle and approve at the end, then you know what you get.
So, I, I know probably need to go to that here, but um. I guess I would say about the building wall, and true, about this building wall is that obviously there are plenty of examples of using architecture. In order to break that down, in order to give the direct individual addresses to this rather than having to look like this one big wall. Their techniques are available to do that, and they're time tested, and they could be done, temporary architecture could be done with. It can be done, I know it was George architecture, it can be done with a lot of different stylistic approaches to, I mean, it's like. Chappaqua, I'll send them to a different style for each store, or they do several styles for one seller. But I'm not recommending, I have a certain taste on it, okay.
And you don't think that. But do we, does that not look more dense? Like, if you have three or four story buildings, even if it looks like separate buildings, the entire length of that. That, um, plot, to me, that looks much denser than this current drawing.
You, 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 you're looking at that when you say that.
Absolutely, I, I, I think it looks as massive as you're making it sound like.
But I don't think that's a fair depiction, it's flat, and it's got, there's no.
This isn't rendering what it's supposed to, it's not like, oh, I apologize, but. Andrew, if you throw up the rendering that's looking from across the street, I mean, I think it gives you the better context. Of what the intention was to try to make this not look like.
And, and most people are gonna approach this from an oblique angle, you're not really gonna ever see where I am, right, to build this.
Looking at, you do fly over. Look, nobody's saying we're the smartest people, we, we look for people to, to, for advice, right? To the diner, to this, how to break it up, right, it's four hundred seventeen feet, the first thing we look at, get away from the train tracks. How to activate the street, and how to break this thing up so it doesn't look like just one gigantic four hundred seventeen, well, that's just a lot. Right, and, and the odd thing is, we're getting that it looks like a big block when it looks, we try to make it look like four distinct buildings. Looking across the street at four separate buildings, that was kind of the idea we were going for. Well.
But now, you think it's gonna be free potentially?
I have no idea, I can't even.
Andrews.
Makes my brain hurt.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having some technical issues, pulling up that, but rendering on my end, I guess one question I had, uh, while this loads is, I, I, it, it's. I, I, I can't see it, supposedly there's a model in the room, um, is it the model that we built by chance?
No, it's not.
No.
Oh, well, that, that would be a very, that would be a very useful tool, since we spent so much time and effort to build that for this particular discussion.
We, I don't, we didn't wanna, we're not in the town hall, so we weren't gonna carry it down the street. We thought that might not be a great idea.
Andrew, I, I think it's a pretty useful tool also, that's why I built it out of scrap wood in my woodshop.
Oh, I, I, I can't see it, Tom, I'm, I'm sorry, it's not on the, whatever view I have, um.
No, that's, that's fine, and, and the reason I built it is because I hadn't built it, I felt I should build it, is because the planning board made a specific request. With an image attached to it, model, very simple model specs for a massing model at the scale of your drawing supplemental. And we kept asking for it, and asking for it, and asking for it, and we were rebuffed by everybody. Everybody we talked to about, including the planning department, including the legal counsel, including the town board, it was like crickets.
But didn't we do? I'm just confused, I don't know what you're asking for that was right.
You wanted the favorite model.
You wanted the much.
You wanted the last, I bought that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so we decided, somebody decided that the planning board didn't need it, which is a little astonishing to me. To be like, your architectural board said, we need to have this model, and somebody decides, yeah, you guys don't need that. Well, that's, that's why I built it, because you guys decided that we don't need it, and if it had been provided, it would have been a better model, because. Built by, you know, model builders rather than me with the chop saw in my, in my shop. So that's why it's here, and for me, it was really instructive, maybe not for anybody else, but it was really instructive in terms of the overall mass in relation to. The street and the buildings on the street, now I also have to say that. And for you, because you, I talked a long, but I think this is important, um, and I think it's all. We have had a conversation about where are we going with our obligation for. Multifamily housing in this town, now there's either a, a, um. A desire to do it out of altruism, because we think it's the right thing to do, and I think we have that in our, in our master plan, we do. Um, but if, if we don't do it, we're gonna be told to do it, and we're gonna be told how to do it. And I'm afraid we're gonna be told where to do it.
Totally agree.
And so this project is really, really important as our toe in the water. For deciding how we're gonna address that issue, and I think it should be the model project of this is how Chappaqua. Is dealing with this issue, we are forward looking, we are doing it in a way, in a way which returns to the public as well as. Returns to the public as well as returns to the need for housing. And that is, I think, what drives it, and. As a consequence. In order to really assess anything here, I think it's kind of important to think about, well. What if there are three story buildings on the other side of the street, because that's, if, if there's a way to unlock that puzzle. That's the next most logical place for us to do multiple, and then you would have this great street, which is a residential street, which has all. Evidence we've been talking about. So I think it's important, it'd be a long term future, but. I mean, the sign on the, on the wall in, in the room that we meet in, it says seventy nine one. Right, so there's, there's a, a perspective here about thinking about the future and acting in that interest now. Thinking about, well, what does it look like to have three story buildings on the other side, or two stories, or, not two, or four story buildings on the other side? And begin to think about this project in the context of where we go from here. And the way which maybe sets a standard for what happens at the ground floor plan. What happens with the number of four unit units, what happens with the architecture? Would we be happy on the other side of the street to have another one of these?
Absolutely not. But we said that already and we knew that, as part of, that was a big issue with the farm based code, was that we were never gonna, we can't put four stories on the other side of the street.
You know.
Because it significantly inhibits the sight line of everyone on one forty nine Kings.
How many?
It's a big area over there.
No, no, it doesn't. It. For you to discuss.
We're, we're here to debate what's happening.
Like, that's not what's the issue today, but that is why we want you to look at that parking lot over there.
And it's nine thirty, so.
Yeah.
I think you should be wrapping.
Uh, on the issue, uh, so I think a lot of like, as the planning board's. Concerns about good planning, good urban design have come across.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, tonight, and I believe they have. Um, when it comes to the issue of. The minimum width of a street wall that, that we're talking about right now. It's not an issue, a hill that I'm gonna die on, but I, 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 I agree with Tom, but I, I think that. I think that, uh, the better urban design would be less of this like sawtooth thing. However, it's not my priority, but I do, I do agree with Tom on that, um. Some would consider, um, and maybe there's a male, uh, street wall height, I mentioned that Kuzinesa, but they're. Um, that sort of can be helpful to maybe, uh, address some of the issues. I mean, the other reason we have not, except that, um, you guys were up very beginning, is the last recommendation here is process. Um, and I know that it's neither, you may not really wanna get into that at this very moment, but it is something to consider, um, how this, uh. Moves forward, what the approval mechanisms are, and, um. Something to think about also.
So I think that comment, that comment on your memo was not a new one. That's been brought up at a number of.
Correct.
Meetings, and I think already considered by the town board.
Who met at Jersey.
But we appreciate you bringing it up again.
So I think it's obvious, I, I personally feel this meeting was very productive, I think we covered a lot of ground, we have more to cover. Is it appropriate now to pick another date and, and have another meeting on?
Oh, I, I would, by the way, did it, what's the messaging to the developer?
I think.
Maybe, you know, just, because you're not gonna stick, I don't think you have a special project that should work with a developer, you know, and, uh, and, and clearly. You know, one of the areas that there's a resistance to doing things if they don't think they're going towards a successful. Like, do we wanna, I guess one position is you could say, we're gonna do a, we're gonna write zoning, to what you're saying, and, and hand it to the developer, and if you're interested, you're interested, and if you're not, you're not. Um, and the other. Philosophy is, I think, to work with the developer and, and do a zoning and a site planning legal project in tandem, which frankly is what I have to have.
So we had started that way, and then I don't know what happened, how it got bifurcated, I remember it did.
I think there was a desire to pull back on the work that was in the engineering detail or the necessity to complete a site right then. Uh, especially a whole special permit application. Uh, required additional engineering and work that they.
Is there a way, though, on the legislation to basically like. Attach like a rendering? And say it needs to look substantially like that? So that. It can, you know, with whatever changes we discussed in the, you know, this is gonna change, and we said that, that, you know, last building is probably gonna come off. Um, with whatever we discussed, but instead so that there's some point of reference. To instead, it can say substantially similar or something like this, or whatever the legal language is to put there. So that it doesn't turn out to be something completely different than what we're discussing here, unless that's what we, the direction we chose to go.
Yeah, not, not with the legislation, and what we can do is, uh, if we got to the point of writing a secret, a determination of significance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that could closely fit, or we tried to closely fit it to the concept plan and different. Aspects of the project that are, um, important to the town board.
Mm-hmm.
The perfect solution, it's not a purpose, the perfect solution is the, the, the dual. Um, special permit application alongside the legislation, they get done at the same time, and I said at the top of the meeting, it's not too late to do that.
Um, and I'm, I'm gonna be frank, we've been at this since over a year. I'm the developer, Don Heimer owns the project, and he's a friend, and Tom's gone. And I'm not saying this, this isn't a threat, I'm here, I got on the plane at six thirty and ran here. He's finished, he doesn't wanna do this anymore. It's their family, they don't live forever, it's that built for, I think, Mercedes and like fifty years ago. I think this is an important project, and Don's saying, Don thinks this is right, and we said this, and, and we continue to say. I live in the next town, my kids do. That, uh, not even mess up, dance your best, whatever, just we're here, all the time of the week, our best friends have been down. I think this is a significant project for town, I think all the things that are designed and the way it's designed and. Being environmentally friendly, it's something that can be done, that can be replicated and be significant. And not wholeheartedly believes that, doesn't wanna build three story rubber roof building. They don't wanna do that, the family, they wanna do this, that's why we've been going at it so long. The reason we separated at that point was because at a point the costs were becoming. Absolutely ridiculous, at a point where we have nothing to prove. I said, we're gonna go spend two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars more. And still maybe not get approved, doesn't seem to make sense, let's get. A foundation for what this can be done, and then take the next step. But that was six months ago, when I, we made that decision, and we are in meetings, I think, once a week to do this. This is productive, like saying we want a better streetscape. Is fantastic, I'm smiling talking about it, because that's. What I do in every other town around the country, when we develop, we get into workshops with. The council of every town and planning department, and we come up with a project that they want to work, and when we walk in, it's a seven oh vote when we walk out. If we don't go into a room, if it's not unanimous, because we want everybody to be happy. Right, there's always gonna be, nobody's always gonna be happy, but we want something that works, right? And if you need to give five minutes, whatever, this happens to be the smallest one that we've ever designed. Because it's just, it's a small town. We're happy to work through it, we just need to know what we're working towards. If it's the streetscape we're working towards. Wait, we're gonna go sit and try to get that done. If it's a streetscape that, oh, we wanna reduce it by ten units, that becomes a really hard project to build, and I'm swinging honest, at thirty five units, it's not. Worth building based on what the retail footprint is and what that income draws, just least it is we can. The simple man is just, it's, that's easier to do for the family. For them to do, rather than taking that, that, that map is just better for them. Right, uh, I'm honest, I've said it all the time, the joke dollar general is, that's just better for their family. Right, it, it's, that's just the facts, and I've said it all along, they have a time table, and there's always talk with. Walgreens there, that's why we always say it, I'm not saying it's a threat, I'm saying it's honesty. There's a point where they can't, they're gonna have a banking store that's not paying the rent, it's making a decision, and that time is coming.
So, Jeff, if I may, so this, this was a successful.
Yeah, this, so we thought of this, we want the streetscape changes.
If we could, if we could build on that.
Yeah.
Street is productive, and if we could, if, if this board could continue to give new clear direction and will continue to make progress, could we get this, the, the.
So, so that was worth a streetscape, but is it just the streetscape, because I've asked a few times, if it's just that, and then it comes back, well, can it be thirty five units?
Yeah, it's not productive for us if he works in a vacuum, comes back and we trash it up again.
I.
So we really, and, and it sounds like you have serious resistance to. The, the rent, the rent looks, the massing, the whole thing, you, you went to the trouble of designing your own project, so.
You came up with some alternative.
Anyway, you, you, you.
That's just, that's just not fair.
Okay, but I'm asking, are, are.
No, no, you came up with some ideas, so.
Is that, is that something that he needs to look at, do we think as a group, that the developer needs to look at. Changing the whole massing, the sawtooth, the location of the, the side alley, the, the pulling back, you know, some of all of the different. Uh, uh, features of the project, you know, I haven't liked most of them, um, but is that something that the board is gonna want to relook at too? I think we should kind of go through the laundry list of all the issues.
I agree.
And then let him come back and, and, and give us something holistically that we can have another look at.
I agree.
So, does that mean we need?
What am I being asked?
So, so we need maybe. Um, just maybe we need another workshop type meeting of this group to talk about other elements besides the streetscape and the storefront and the transparency. Um, although we've kind of talked about these, maybe we'll talk about them again. In the meantime, maybe between now and that meeting, he doesn't redesign it, um, he talks to his partner and they talk about it on economics and. They should just have their own conversation, they don't even have to tell us what the issue is, because we don't necessarily have to even believe in it. But let them start thinking about a little bit of a smaller project and prepare themselves for what that might be. And then maybe after another workshop, then they go back to the drawing board, and, you know, it's not three hundred thousand dollars to do some more schematics, and you don't have to do. I don't think the most beautiful, sexy, grand things, just give us, you know, an idea of what.
Your proposal. I, I, I think I disagree, and this is why, because sitting on the planning board role in here is one of the things that actually the planning board attracts. Is not being able to make a decision for an applicant, and the applicant sometimes will leave the room and say, what just happened in there? I don't know what I'm supposed to do next. And this gentleman here, I, I understand, the first time these drawings were submitted for a looksee by the town was like a year ago. And so I feel bad because I think this meeting should have happened eleven months ago. But it didn't, and I understand the urgency here, and I think that's fair, that he. Deserves some answers to these questions, and for me to have the. Architecture hanging out there or something, or the massing that is a problem.
I was talking about two weeks.
Like. No, but I, I say, I say, it doesn't happen unless you guys wanna look at the study. I mean, my vote is that it should be looked at, but I think that I probably minority, I think I, I know I speak for the planning board. But, and I don't know how these decisions are made at the town board, because the planning board has like five, which is how that works. Representative planning board, we have problems with that. But. If this group does not want to address that now, I mean. We have to decide whether we're going to address that because it's planning board concern, or if we're out, out voted, then that's fine too. If we wanna venue for the full planning board has a chance to talk to every, to the full, uh, A R B or V A R, whatever.
I just think it's, you know, it's too many people talking.
Okay, but it's complicit in also to people, to people who get a chance to respond. Um, so, uh, all, what I'm arguing. And maybe this doesn't work, but what I'm arguing, let's, and my friend here may have serious problems with this, but. Strip out something, uh. Put fewer, put, put fewer restrictions in it. If that is what gets it done quickly, if that what is what gets you to a site plan. Application as quick as possible. These, these special permanent stipulations can be whatever you want them to be, they can be everything you want, or they can be nothing, it can be whatever you want. The conversations that we're gonna have about this stuff, where you guys are gonna have with the applicant about some of these things. Apparently it can happen in the site plan review process, and does not have to get tied up the zoning. I prefer it to tie up the zoning, but I think I'm losing that argument, I know the planning board would not tie that zoning, but if it'd be in the zoning, that's our, our position. But there is another way that we are not gonna support, but, you know, we're not the deciders of all this, I'm just trying to figure out for this gentleman over here. What, where does he go from here? And what's the best way for him to get to where he needs to go? And if these things can be talked about in site interview, and this gentleman is open to making those changes. That's my.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's more advisable to talk about it now before the zoning is changed.
You're right.
And, and they're.
Well, so I don't mean that.
So it seems to me, just from kind of culling together. Keeping in mind that no one in this room is gonna be completely happy or completely unhappy, it seems to me that if. When you figure out how to react, how to activate the streetscape a little more. And get rid of that northern. Northernmost building. Which is all under the, under the sewer line anyway.
You deal with the sewer.
Yes.
Issue, let's not get rid of the building. Let's, let's, well, let's deal with stormwater issue and whatever applications it has.
Correct.
But.
Sewer, which is gonna. You're gonna lose some units with that, and. Reactivate the streetscape, I think. And you're gonna figure out how that's gonna be done, I feel like that actually. Those were the two biggest issues.
Well, and I think you could do it, not with three D, not with frames, you could do it quickly as a plan.
Yes.
A bunch of plan studies.
Yeah, yes.
But, but keeping. The building as it looks now, knowing that you're gonna chop things off here, you might have something there, um, and, and I'm saying don't redesign the building. Now, redesign the plan.
Yeah.
And, and I think while you're doing that, you kind of know what it's gonna.
Yeah, but to see what.
I agree.
That changes how that affects things, how it affects the normal audience.
Right.
Oh, you're asking the wrong person.
Randy.
If I ask that for him, he's gonna.
Well, make sure.
Keep in mind that we have a public hearing next week, so. It might be helpful, it can, you know, add the time by that, but I don't know that you do, uh. That if we had that, when people could comment down, would be very nice, I don't know that you can get it done so quickly, but.
The time period.
Keep that in mind.
That's a small tally bell, everybody, I don't wanna put him on the spot.
No.
Cause it's not just doing, it's not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, it's just a little difficult to, to hear everyone simultaneously, just to be clear. I think plan studies make a lot of sense, uh, given the state of the discussion. We can definitely jump on that immediately. I believe the next. Uh, town meeting is on the thirteenth, if I'm not.
Yeah, Tuesday.
That is, and not a tenable timeline for us, uh, but certainly we can have it fairly shortly thereafter.
It's also a public hearing, it's got to hurt everybody in the town, just, that's not.
So, so, because I asked just to set up another meeting of this group to review the plan of things.
Let us all figure it out.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want it.
I do say that's not the goal, the community's part of this whole process.
But, but I guess. No, 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 the point is, if they come up with something and we say, no, 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 that's not what we were talking about here. It doesn't make sense to give it to the public when we're not gonna support that.
Well, you know, the public's not part of this whole study, and this is very.
Well, that's why it's, it's just the.
But, you know, the public concept, where every meeting of the farmers' market.
I know it was.
Sports, sports, and sports are concerned about the size of this project, and I don't hear any mention, I don't think the public, but Ali, I think he's mentioned the public. But I don't think anybody else has mentioned the public, uh, uh, the public's basically been mentioned by the, the planning board committee for the community, that's the public to me, and that there's so.
Well, I've mentioned that too, I think we all.
Comp plan comes in, I mean, I, this is, this is.
I, I, I think we all did, but I think. And that's why we're having all these public meetings.
My thought, there's all sorts of secret issues, there's, the, the community here has a lot of small homes, they're gonna be slammed by traffic. And people have come up to me and said how concerned they are about disflipping the gentrification switch. For the most socially economically diverse part of our community, in the little ham communities, that area, and people have said they're gonna be priced out. And it's gonna fundamentally change our community, if that's what you wanna do, then.
Well, it's also that the comp plan says the development should be centered in the ham.
But it also, the scaling down to the, the ham field department, so we're gonna get into what the goals of the.
So.
Number one goal of the comp.
No, but the point is, if we're, if they're gonna redo it, and it's not what we're discussing here, it doesn't make sense to show it to the public. But the reason why we haven't closed the public hearing. The reason why we haven't closed the public hearings is because we wanna continue to hear from the public. It's just, I don't wanna present something to the public as a revised plan, if it's not. Appropriate with it.
Public's on the outside of what people can be able to.
Well, I, I disagree, I think we're. Okay, well, I mean, we, that's why we've been having those public hearings, and the written comments that people have been sending in as well. And those have been distributed, the changes have already been made, and more changes are going to be made.
If you wanna get it more publicized, the project is reduced somewhat, uh, you know, that's, that would get more publicized, to be honest with you. Any simple way.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I I have one, I have to do my job here, I have one comment from the planning board, I remember that I promised, but. Uh, who we actually have, one was the sewer, and that you take care of. Oh, the one on your name, yeah. He was concerned about that. And the other is, um, the overhead wires, the wires along the street, and the process of construction, what's gonna happen there. And also he's concerned about fire trucks, right? With the, with the overhead wires, with the overhead. And that's the comment, I'm not sure. For zoning, it's probably appropriate to the.
Well, those are things that'll definitely be addressed. I've heard it, thanks. Uh, I think we've already spoken to Claire, right? Yeah. Um, okay, so I guess next steps is for you and Andrew to get together. Think about this, keeping in mind the thoughts that, you know, activate the space. Is there a way to reduce the density at all, and. Dealing with that sewer loss.
We wanna schedule another meeting, like, say, a three week.
Schedule a meeting, don't schedule them, so they can get us to that. But I think we should try to schedule it soon thereafter.
Okay.
That worked out, that's all right?
You know, I don't know.
All right, so that's three things, right, the last thing, street, the sewer, and if you can decrease the density at all.
I didn't write it third, but I got it first. Uh, well, the first one takes care of the third one.
Thank you, everybody, and.